Yeah, yeah. What's that like too? I mean, not as crowded as the top, but just crossing the streets, busy intersections. But everybody just seems to, you know, it's like watching ants. How do they keep running into each other? They just do it.
You guys from New York City?
Yeah. Wow, lovely. Out to guests.
They tend to be out of the year or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm like Jeff, like New York.
Why did you say on foot?
Oh, okay. But you had fun visiting.
Right.
Gotcha. Makes sense to me.
My favorite expression about New York is if the subway came, we'd not take you there, we'd not work though.
That's just how it is, huh?
That's how it is.
That's the statement. You're willing to stick by it.
It's such a fun place. And there's so much energy, you know? It's exhausting, really. We always want to...
Energy is the right word. Energy. All right, I gotta show you some of these pictures.
Oh, Dave's got on Facebook. I'm gonna get to see that.
I know. He's missing.
I know. We should get Dave on Facebook.
All right. You don't have to look at all these pictures, but every day, you know, I post all these pictures of different things.
I thought I wanted to kind of give you a picture.
But here is my final posting. Oh, it didn't even show what I had. Here. Well, I can't even show you, dang it. Anyway, feel free to scroll through if you want to look at it. I mean, we ate outdoor restaurants. There's the Brooklyn Bridge. We're on the subway. We did 9/11. That was a picture at the Ground Zero Museum. I just did a close-up, so it looks like I actually took it. Oh, yeah, yeah. I love this sign. Welcome to our...
Stand? Yes. My name is here.
I love New York. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. You guys can't hear me, can you?
No. Try Pam's. Pam's.
See if yours is on.
Hello.
No. They're on. They're not very loud. Can you hear me at all?
Hello, 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 hello. Testing, 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 testing.
No, yes? Hello, hello? No? Okay, well, I'll just talk loud for a while. Um, is...
Is anyone here?
Oh, wait, no, you're on.
I'm on.
Is that better?
That's better.
Is that better? Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
Magic.
All right, um, so I would like to call the meeting to order. Wendy, if you would, please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Here.
Pam Howard?
Here.
Lori Vista Ward?
Here.
Barbara Cruz?
Here.
Dave Levy?
Here.
Mark Sutter?
Here.
Jeff Swante?
Here.
Thank you. Jeff, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you would read the mission statement, please.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is to adopt the agenda as presented, and I will entertain a motion to do so.
We actually need to strike...
Oh, we actually need to scratch something.
We have a change.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, let's see, where is it?
6.6.
Okay, so we are removing 6.6, which was approval of temporary and permanent easements. So we're deleting that item and then renumbering, um, 6.7 will be 6.6, and 6.8 is now 6.7. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those changes, or that change.
I'm moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the deletion of item 6.6 and the renumbering of the following items. Is there any discussion or questions? No? Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you, and the agenda is unanimously adopted. Item 3.1 is approval of minutes from the executive session on May 2nd and regular meeting on May 2nd. So let's start with the executive session minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve those as presented. So moved. And a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the executive session on May 2nd. Any questions, changes? No? Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Thank you, and those are unanimously approved as well. And then we go to the regular meeting minutes for May 2nd, and I will entertain a motion to approve those. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on May 2nd. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none. Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes are unanimously approved as well. Takes us to item 4.1, Inspiring Students Awards. Dr. Shear?
Yes, we have some.
All right.
Madam President, members of the board, it's always my pleasure to recognize outstanding people in the school district and certainly our citizens in this community. First, I'd like to ask Lisa Salazar if she would come up, please. I'd like to recognize Lisa tonight. She's a teacher at Conball Mental School for outstanding professionalism during the CMAS testing last month. Needless to say, anytime anybody's involved in testing, it's stressful. It's a stressful time of the year for all staff and students, and during that time, uh, the district had an observer from Pearson and CTE visit to view how we handle state assessments within our schools. Mrs. Salazar allowed these individuals to visit her room and observe the implementation of testing in her classroom. She was calm, reassured, her students that they were doing a great job, followed all required procedures, and answered all questions from our Pearson observer. She also conveyed how hard our staff works to ensure state testing is successful for students. She's a shining example of why Thompson helps our students excel, even in difficult situations, and we do appreciate her hard work and dedication to our district and taking this very seriously. So thank you very much. We appreciate it, Lisa. So congratulations to you, and here is a inspiring student certificate and also a lapel pin. Hope you'll enjoy wearing proudly. Thank you. I bet you.
Dr. Shear, if you would either speak up or speak closer, we're having trouble with the sound tonight, and thank you.
I was blessed with height, not for a microphone like this. I'd like to ask Jerry Crisp, Susan Scott, Tyler Schlegel, Afton Valerio, and Steve Moose, if you could come up, please. I personally am very proud of these people that are directly involved with our CTE program. I need to tell you that the times that I've had the opportunity to be involved with the business community and these folks coming to represent our efforts in terms of interfacing our education system and our students with business, these people have really done an incredible job. I'm also proud of this program because these people were really not around here six years ago. We didn't have a program like this, and these people basically took it from very little to a, what it is today, which is, in this community, highly respected and very powerful. These Thompson School District staff members are being recognized for their amazing work with college and career readiness in our district. Due to their hard work and dedication for our students, we are now working with CareerWise to expand apprenticeship opportunities in our community. Students were hired by companies at our district, hosted career fair, and the CTE Business Reception with the Bank of Colorado for CTE students and our business partners. This is truly an amazing team, creating improved outcomes for students across our district and giving them an opportunity to lift the lid, so to speak, into what the real world of work is all about, and I'm very proud of these people for providing that opportunity for our students. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Recently, we had the opportunity to join up with our three Rotary Clubs in the area on April 23rd to do an interesting and amazing thing as far as planting some trees. And I'd like to ask TJ Holan, Dustin French, Mark Second, Sean Taylor, Wayne Schlegel, Keith Richards, Alex McDarmick, Nicole Riley, Rick Shaw, Austin Higgins, if they would come over and let us recognize them for a moment. Any of them here tonight? Come on up, y'all.
Here's some tree folks. All right.
I knew they were here. These are the kind of folks you need when you need something done to your gardens or your landscaping. Believe me, they've done some great work for us. And recently, we wanted to acknowledge their, their efforts in the planning and preparation and execution of a tree planting effort, excuse me, that was made possible by a donation from the three Loveland Rotary Clubs on Monday, April 23rd. In addition to their thoughtful planning as far as the, the type of tree, locations, et cetera, excuse me, they went above and beyond by coordinating efforts with sites to get kids involved in the planning and educating them on the importance of trees and the significance of Earth Day and Arbor Day. Their hard work ahead of time and careful planning made the events go off without a hitch and inspired the kids to take ownership of the trees in the process, and it was really quiet an event, the students really enjoyed it. I had a chance to see what was going on over at Winona. In addition, the group is our core snowplow group. This is the work, the group that moves a lot of snow for us. They work weekends and early mornings, coming at midnight or 3:00 a.m. to make sure the, the sites are safe and accessible for students, staff, and visitors. Their efforts can be, can be overlooked. We do thank them for all of their hard work because it truly is appreciated, not only in terms of this tree planting, but also as we've had issues with the snow over the last six years that I've been here, it's nice to have you all getting that job done. So thank you very much. Provide you each one of your own.
Can I, can I ask one of you folks where you planted the trees? Would you share? You can just use your outdoor voice, that's okay. You don't, you don't have to step up to the microphone, I'm just curious.
We planted the trees at Winona, Sarah Milner, Conball, Edmondson.
Wow. Bill Reed, too? I noticed there were some...
And Bill Reed.
Okay, I noticed there were some at Bill Reed because I live right there. Great, thank you. That's a lot of trees. Well, they're in places where they weren't, weren't before.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Madam President, I want to say finally that, um, that...
You don't have to say it louder, Stan, I'm sorry.
That, that concludes our presentation, but I also want to qualify the fact that my hobbling around on a crutch tonight isn't because I'm retiring, it's because I don't know how to walk a dog in the snow, and it wound up causing me a knee problem, so I'm working on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is a little bit of a change in our usual, usual presentation before we get to the public comments and things. We've got item 4.2, which is the dual immersion presentation, which I believe is Dr. Crespo and maybe Tony Tyson and some students and some teachers.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Shear, I will hand this over very quickly to Tony Tyson so she can share an update related to our dual immersion program.
Madam Chair and members of the board, nice to see you again. The last time we were here, we were looking at the 12th graders who have the seal of bilinguacy. Now we're going to visit with our dual-language immersion program at Truska and dual-language at, also at Cottonwood. So, if you didn't know, they just, in the process of finishing second grade. So we have three teachers here tonight, two of them who started the program and one who was also in second grade, and they're going to talk a little bit about a very interesting study. They did the perception of dual-language immersion by second graders. Isn't that really important that we ask the kids what they think of the, of the whole program we have? So not only that, you will have an opportunity to see the kids in action. So, um, we have three teachers here tonight. Ida Weber, who started off in kindergarten and moved to second grade this year, a way to keep our program moving and really help it along. You have Yasenia Perez, who is still in kindergarten, but she will go to third grade next year. And, um, she represents Cottonwood, and Ida represents Truska. And we have Margaret Angulo. Margaret, where are you? Margaret, who is now in Cottonwood, teaching second grade. So, Margaret will work with her students in just a bit. Ida and Yasenia, our great teachers, are going to share the information with you. Off we go.
Buenas tardes. Gracias por tenernos. Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. We are in a cohort with CU Boulder doing a master's, and in this class, we were just looking for ideas to do our research, and we realized that we know how good our kids are in the program, but we don't know how they feel, if they like to be bilingual kids. So we decided that it was a good idea to use them to do our research. So this is where our students' perceptions of bilingualism comes in place. We have a research question. What are the perceptions and attitudes of students in dual-language immersion program towards learning a second language and becoming bilingual? We think this is relevant because one of our goals in a dual-language immersion program is that our students develop cross-cultural competence, and this study also allows us to understand where do we stand in reference to the goal as of now and to determine the next steps that we need to take. We have our demographics. Cottonwood Plains, we have 45 second graders, and Truska, we have 36 second graders. 29 are Hispanic or Latino, 52 are not Hispanic or Latinos. Their ages, we have 23 students, they're seven years old, 58 of those students are eight years old. How many years they have been in the program? We have five, that this is their first year, 22, that this is their second year, and 54 who has been in the program for three years. We make an empirical investigation, and we did a survey with 25 questions. Here comes our data. We asked them several questions, 25. One of them, how much do you like English lessons? Here they say that 70.4% that they like English very much, 25.9, they like it very much. When we put those two together, we have 96% they like the English lessons. Then we asked the same, how much do you like Spanish lessons? We have 54.3% that they feel that they like them very much, and 42% that they like it. Then we asked, how difficult do you find learning in English? 66.7% they feel that learning English is easy, 30.9, sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's difficult. Then we asked, how difficult do you find learning Spanish? And this is where we have the, aha. 59.3% of them, they said that sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's difficult, and 33.3% they say that it's easy, and we have a 7.4 that they were like, it's difficult.
So, yeah, just, we had an overall of 25 questions, and we just wanted to ask, you know, is this, you know, how do they feel in overall, even though, you know, you might see that the percentage changes on how they feel in Spanish compared to English, that still the overall is very positive. They might not feel they're very good at it, but they still feel they're good at it, and so that tells us a little bit about their confidence, too. We asked them how confident they feel in the, in the second language, and they all say they feel more confident because they're able to speak two languages. So you all have the paper, and I don't know if you have a chance to, to read it or not, but, um, overall, all of the outcomes were very positive. And like Yasenia, Senora Perez mentioned, you know, we have never asked the kids how they feel or what they think about learning in Spanish, whether in school and they're in that program because of their parents or because of proximity to school, and, and they just started learning like, you know, in that format since they were in kindergarten. Some of the kids that we have here today started with us in kindergarten, were here two years ago presenting with us, and now, um, they have been my students again for the second year, and they're doing amazing things that you'll get to see in a little bit. So, overall, 65% of the students agree that learning a second language has helped them understand other culture, cultures that are different from them. Uh, that's part of our curriculum that we try to, um, teach while integrating it with the content that we are supposed to teach at each sec, at each grade, whether it's kindergarten, first grade, second grade, or next year, third grade. We also ask if, you know, what do they, how do they feel if they think their, um, language skills are having, you know, they are developing language skills in both languages, it doesn't matter if they were already proficient in English, they're still developing and expanding their vocabulary in English as well as in Spanish. And we have some Spanish speakers who are learning English as their second language. They have come into school with no English at all. We have some Chinese students also that are coming up from first grade to second year, uh, second grade next year, and that would be interesting also comparing what are their perceptions on being trilingual. So, overall, like I said, one of the other questions that we asked, because it might change a little bit from school to school, Cottonwood has an option of only English if parents are not, you know, don't want the kids to participate in the dual language. Truska doesn't. So we have some students that are there because they're closer, you know, closer to school, and that's the, the school that they want to attend. So we were just wondering, you know, what are this, you know, how do they feel about it? Students are very, um, you know, they didn't report, you know, anything negative from their parents not knowing that we were teaching in Spanish or that, you know, it wasn't an option. Overall, what I think impacted us the most was to see and, and read their comments on how knowing Spanish helps them understand other people, how they can communicate with other people, whether it's in their community here in Loveland or if they were to travel to a country where they speak that language. That was their main answer for most of those open questions where we wanted to see how is this going to help you in the future? How does this help you now? And some of that is communicating with my friends that only speak Spanish. Now, most of those friends that speak Spanish also speak English, so it limits their ability to practice, you know, in school sometimes during recess or outside of, of school, but they all say some of their answers was, you know, I, I'm able to speak and understand people who speak this second language. Learning in Spanish is fun, it's interesting, it's good, it's going to be good for me in the future, it makes me smarter. And only percent of them said I'm here because my parents want me to. So, and then, you know, in the future, it says their, uh, learning in Spanish is going to help me in the future by being able to communicate, whether, again, that's at a job setting or somewhere else, and, um, it makes them smarter. They really like being smart. And then some of their answers, you know, this is exactly how they wrote it. It's important because some of my friends only speak Spanish, because if someone only knows Spanish, I can help them. I think it's important that I learn Spanish so I can talk to people who speak Spanish, so I can understand what people are saying and I can talk to them, and so when you go to a different country, you can talk to them. And when we asked them, okay, again, how is this going to help you in the future? I think we have some future prospect teachers with us that we're already preparing, and says, it will help me understand people in other countries by letting me understand people from other countries. It would help me understand other people. It would help me get a good job, and I could be a Hispanic girl and also a dual-language teacher someday. So, you know, it, it was just really positive and very nice for us to see and just to read what it is that, you know, they think. And then some of the answers didn't really have an option for them to explain their reasoning or their thinking around things, so, um, we would like to, in the future, continue, you know, some of this perception surveys with our kids as they go up in grade level and also for the upcoming classes that we have in kindergarten and in first grade. So now we are going to invite Senora Angulo from Cottonwood and her kids, second grader, she teaches second grade at Cottonwood. Her kids are gonna just have a little conversation about something they have been learning in the literacy part of the Spanish classroom.
I didn't want to, like, prepare them or coach them in any particular way. I want them to be natural. We did like a little review, make sure that they weren't too scared to be up here. They're excited because they're going to be on TV. We've been learning about biographies, and, and we learned about Frida Kahlo, and most recently, we learned about Gabriel Avista. So I'll start talking to them.
So he wrote, he, he enjoyed writing the letter on the computer. It was an activity that he really liked and he enjoyed. Already received a letter back from the students from sister writing Spanish and they read them, and they compare notes to a tomorrow morning. Video chat with the student. Excellent, muy buen trabajo. My kids just reminded me that we video chatted with Trust Get Kids, with Cottonwood, using our wonderful Chromebooks from Rotary Club. And so they really liked that practice between the two schools. It was very fun for them. They practiced their, you know, interview questions. What's your favorite color? And what's your name? And how many brothers and sisters do you have? It was really fun for them and for us to see, to see that. Now, we're going to do, since Cottonwood did a little bit of literacy and talked about what they've learned about Gabriela Mistrall, we're going to do a little bit about math, just so you see the, the mathematical thinking that they engage in, in Spanish. Okay? Pasen por favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, students. I will have to say that in English because my Spanish is nowhere near as good as yours. Muchas gracias. There you go. That's, that's just terrific. It's just amazing, especially math, like, in their heads in Spanish. I'm impressed. Way to go. Okay, brings us to superintendent's report, I believe, item four point three. Stan, you have?
Just real quick, I just wanted to thank the, the folks last week that provided a reception for me. It was wonderful to have an opportunity to interact with several different people in the community and really kind, nice words that people had to say and the cards and the, the other things that everybody provided, certainly Lori, you and Pam, and others on the board who were involved. I appreciate it very much. And also to the community. It was very special and something very, very memorable. So, thank you.
All right, board reports. I will start down here with Mark and go up the aisle.
So, somebody on the board told me that as the end of the year approaches, things get a lot busier. They weren't kidding. I got a chance to talk to two fourth grade classes at Mary Blair, and we talked about how government makes decisions. This ran through the Roberts Rules of Order, it was a lot of fun. Met with several different principals in the district and touring a couple more schools, just trying to get my way around the place. Kind of jumped into a crash course about MTSS. Fantastic program, looking forward to seeing that continue to grow. Went to a Walt Clark fundraiser at Peace Ranch, joint school feeder meeting at Con Ball. I attended the first annual Stansbury Stampede. Very exciting event, lots of fun. This one stole my heart, the Bill Reed 100 Year Celebration with the dedication of the Loveland Heart. If you haven't seen it, it is a fantastic piece of art. It's well worth, well worth the drive downtown. Let's see, we had our board subcommittee meeting, starting to talk about the Thompson School District Goals and Objectives. I thought that went real well. I caught the tail end of the Conrad Ball rebranding meeting, very interesting discussion going on over there. And also the next day, the Con Ball T-Bird Turnup. What a neat event, very cool. I met with both superintendents incoming and outgoing. The High Plains, just when you think you've seen it all, then something else comes up and surprises and astounds. The High Plains Give Next Ceremony. What an amazing program, blew me away. Also, that same night, Conrad Ball Talent Show. Our music in this district is so inspiring. We have so much talent in this district and I love to see it. Got a chance to attend Dr. Shear's retirement party, I thought that was really neat. And then I attended an orchestra concert at Mountain View. And once again, we have unbelievable musical talent in this district. That's it.
Paul?
That's a hard act to follow. You have been busy. I'll just throw out a couple other ones. First, I just follow up on the, the Give Next out at the High Plains. I thought that was just extraordinary, outstanding, watching those kids and the experience that they were going through and, and learning the world of charitable giving and how that process works and making those decisions. I thought it was great. Couple weeks ago, I got to see some of our teams compete with the, the big project idea at Loveland High, and one of our teams was able to go down to the Denver area and compete at the state level. So Stan, I'm sorry I missed your, your retirement reception while I was down there with my daughter, watching Loveland High perform in that. And again, it's a program around kids figuring out how to give back to the community, and it's just outstanding to see kids from across the state and the ideas that they had. Other than that, been trying to do some building visits, going to some of the district meetings, parent community conversations. Just a couple takeaways I'll take from that is one, that I hope it's a generalizable, larger community, but if we do decide to go out for a bond and mill, I'm starting to feel some momentum building and some understanding building, so I hope we're, we can hopefully keep that together. And the other thing that struck out at me at the stakeholders meeting and also the Thompson Life meeting was the work being done on the graduate profile. I think that's excellent work and it's providing a framework that if we take it serious and use that to drive our work in this district, I think it's going to be very useful. So I'm, I'm proud and glad we're getting that work done. I'll leave there, so that's good.
Thanks. Barb?
As you can see, we've been hanging out together quite a bit with all of the events going on. Attended the family pie meeting for early childhood. And then, again, I, I just have to echo Mark and Paul with the High Plains, Give Next. I had no idea the power that has and those kids, I'm just, it's my neighborhood. And so to know that those are the kids in my neighborhood that have established this heart of giving is amazing. So it was really neat. Went to a luncheon yesterday for Kids Pack. That was fun to see and Dr. Shear was honored, so. Many more, but that's good.
And I'll echo some of those things as well. The Give Next program that a couple people have mentioned, it's a philanthropic program where the students actually get to decide how to apportion out some dollars that they're, that they're given through the Bohemian Foundation and, and some funders, the Community Foundation, some other funders in there. And the students actually get to pick the agencies that they want to fund. They do agency visits, they, they take RFPs, they look at the proposals from the agencies, and then they make the allocations to the agencies. It's fantastic, real, real life work that they're doing in middle school. And it's going to expand into more schools in the Thompson School District next year, and I can't remember the names of which ones, but I think more middle and maybe Berthold High School.
That's right.
Has it now, okay. Thompson Valley has it now. High Plains is the only middle school, I think, doing it right now.
Lucille Irwin, do they still have?
Oh, Irwin, yeah, Irwin maybe, or maybe they're expanding to there, but they're, they're looking to expand into all the middle and high schools eventually. So that's a terrific program. And the other thing that I participated in, and I think this is like my fifth year doing this, I think, I, I did it the very first year they did it, but there's, there's an event put on in combination with Thompson Education Foundation, the school district, and the City of Loveland through the museum and the Rialto called History Days. And it's for second graders. Every single second grader in the Thompson School District, so Loveland kids, Berthold kids, the Charter School kids, every one of them took a day, day-long field trip, which is funded through the Lola Johnson Experience, a fund that, Lola Johnson was a former board member, and when she passed, her, she had an endowment that went on to this program. And the kids spend a whole day visiting the Loveland Museum, learning about Loveland and Berthold history. They get a backstage tour of the Rialto, and they learn about the history of the Rialto Building and silent movies. Then they go up to Lone Tree, Lone Tree, that's right, Lone Tree Schoolhouse up on, in North Lake Park, and they spend the afternoon up there playing Pioneer Games and learning to write with quill pens and just fun stuff like that. And it's a fantastic, just a fantastic day for the kids. It's, it's six days that the museum and the Rialto and the volunteers, tons of volunteers do to put this on. So kudos to everybody involved in that, the foundation for, for helping take care of the funding, certainly to the Johnson family for, for providing the funding for that, and all the volunteers, City of Loveland and museum volunteers that helped out with that.
Okay, well, I think, I won't be too repetitive, but I do have to say, I went to the Thompson Valley High School Give Next breakfast and got to be a part of that. And I don't think there were any other board members at that one, so I got to see it on the high school level. And we've been working with the Bohemian Foundation for years with this district, and it's one of the best, you know, hands-on, real-world experiences that I think we can offer our students. They really, they, they put these nonprofits through the paces before they award the many money, so that's pretty neat. I also, let's see, I was presenting over at the Mountain View High School Senior Awards Night. As we've mentioned, there's countless awards and ceremonies and field days going on. The Mountain View High School Senior Awards Night was pretty special. We do have a, an Air Force Academy appointee from over there. I think we've had, ever since I've been in, had kids in the district, we've always had at least one student get appointed to the Air Force Academy, which, as you know, it's a huge honor and very difficult. So congratulations to them. And then this morning, I was over at Edmondson doing prize patrol for Thompson Education Foundation, and I just got to work with the kids. They're redoing the design for the computer lab, they're so excited about that. I won't do any more of Thompson Education Foundation report because Kim Akeley Sharon is going to be actually giving a report to us tonight, so I'll just stop right there. Thanks.
Thanks. And Jeff?
Nothing to report.
All right. And Dave?
The MPC had its last meeting for the year. Congratulations to them for a wonderful job. job and staff, Dr. Crespo, Kristin, Skip. And we'll be discussing that later on. And Berthitt High School proudly had two Daniel Scholarship winners.
Thank you. Excuse me, I think. Sorry. Okay, thank you. That concludes board reports. Next up is item 4.5, public comments. Pam, if you would read the public comment rules and regs?
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoint of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient matter, we have scheduled time during the regular board meetings for comments from the public. The board has set aside an unlimited amount of time for public participation prior to the business portion of each meeting on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. The board will not respond to or answer any questions from the speakers. And Paul has the timer, so when you see yellow light come up, that means you have 30 seconds and red means your three minutes is finished. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good. So, we have Shayna Garcia first and she'll be followed by Ann Brunton.
Good evening to everyone. Tonight, I would like to take a few moments to congratulate Stan Shear on his retirement and express my appreciation for all that he has done for the Thompson School District. Loveland was my home for 28 years. My son graduated from Mountain View High School and I worked for the district a total of 14 years. So, Thompson Schools will always have a special place in my heart. I had the pleasure to work with Stan for two years as his secretary and secretary to the Board of Education. Stan came into the district in 2012 during a turbulent time following a shakeup in the superintendent's office. He brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to the district when we needed it most. He kept the district on the tracks through a tremendously difficult period when the board was literally at war with each other. Public meetings were disruptive and a police presence was needed. He kept calm and reassuring when a lesser man would have simply bailed out. During crises, Stan was always rock steady. When the district lost Steve Towne and Dan Mass in such tragic accidents, he was able to carry the district through while personally grieving the loss of two dear friends. Stan's continued focus on what is best for kids has always been present. He spent countless hours visiting with students, staff and parents in a variety of venues, whether it was dropping in during class time, attending plays and sporting events, or visiting at community forums and fundraisers. Stan spoke of his many years in public education with pride and determination. His lifelong focus has been giving back to others to continue to advocate for public education. His leadership strengths include his ability to listen attentively, to place key people in strategic positions, to research ideas, to welcome innovation in some areas, and to ensure accountability for that which needs it. But above all, his kindness, loyalty, generous spirit and empathy are what I admire most about him. Stan is truly a good human being. I'm fortunate to have been able to work with him. Stan, I wish you well in your retirement. Somehow, I imagine Disneyland will figure in. Don't be a stranger. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Shayna.[843.44][843.44](applause)
Good evening, board. Dr. Shear, my name is Ann Brunton and I am the newly elected classified staff advisory chairperson. And I would like to introduce next year's board vice chair, Tammy Ripley. And not here tonight are Secretary Sue Friedy and recording secretary, Rebecca Beckett. We are here tonight to give you an update of the council's activities. At our last CSAC meeting, we thanked Jennifer Kingston for her leadership over the past few years. I will continue to reach out for her, for guidance and for advice. Also, Dr. and Mrs. Shear joined us to thank the council for our work on behalf of the classified staff. We have 11 retirees this year, ranging from three years of service to 37. They have already been honored by the district and we will continue to honor them with our own council certificates as well as certificates from Laramie County. A few of the presentation pictures will be in our upcoming newsletter. Over the summer, we will be working on goals, bylaws and the classified handbook. Next year, we will be continuing our goal to inform classified staff with pertinent information through our monthly newsletter and connecting through new programs, including birthday wishes and recognitions. I would personally like to thank you for your dedication to our students, family and staff of the Thompson School District. Thank you.
Thank you.[946.00][946.00](applause) Thank you. I think you're, there you go. Nope. Try again. There you go.
Jane Lewis, 2599 Saro Court, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear. I'm here tonight in support of placing a property tax mill levy override and bond on the election ballot this fall. Both are critically important to sustaining the well-being of our schools and communities. As a retired educator, serving as a teacher, curriculum specialist and principal in Thompson District for over 35 years, I know firsthand the importance of adequate, safe and well-maintained facilities, as well as the critical importance of attracting and retaining quality teachers. The need to maintain and update our schools to facilities that can provide 21st century instruction in 21st century environments is evident in the ever-increasing dollar amount of now, I believe, around $90 million of deferred maintenance for our existing buildings. Well-maintained and safe schools instill pride and a sense of community that fosters learning for our students, parents and staff, promotes social growth and offers a gathering place for our communities. Not only is it critical to maintain our current facilities, it's equally important to look to the future needs of our ever-increasing population explosion in many directions in our district, particularly to the south and east. A recent drive to Berthitt gave me a firsthand opportunity to see the explosion that is occurring in that region. It's highly likely that many of these homes will have school-aged children. And as we know from current board meetings, the elementary schools in Berthitt are already facing overcrowding conditions. It's time to be proactive rather than reactive and plan for additions to these schools, as well as to possibly look at building a new K-8 school to meet the demands of east of I-25. I know there are underpopulated schools in our district. However, currently, the children are not in these areas. We need to go to where the children are so that our students do not transfer to other district and taking many dollars out of our district with them. Only through a bond can we maintain these things. In addition to providing well-maintained and new buildings, of equal importance is the need to attract and retain the best teachers possible for our schools. I know that the teacher in the classroom is the heartbeat for student achievement and success. It's essential to hire and retain quality teachers who, when working together over a long period of time, are able to provide curriculum delivery and instruction that meets the needs of our many diverse learners. Along with a need for competitive salaries is the long overdue need for funding to return to a curriculum and replacement cycle that allows for our students to be engaged in learning content, critical thinking and life skills for a rapidly changing world. Placing a mill levy override on the November ballot will allow for this. We can no longer kick the can down the road. I urge you to unanimously place the bond and mill levy override on the election ballot this fall. Thank you.[1181.08][1181.08](applause)
Have Laura Taylor. Laura Taylor. Followed by Karen Cookshousen.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Shear, good evening. My name is Laura Taylor and this is my daughter. We go to Stansbury. Stansbury is more than a school. Stansbury is family, a support system. Two generations of my own family have chosen to go to Stansbury. We have made it our school of choice. We have made it a priority to drive across town when necessary so that our children can attend this fantastic school. We appreciate this time for you to send what we have to say. Thank you.[1258.03][1258.03](applause)
So, we have Karen and then we'll have Eric Kloss.
I have a few friends joining me. Karen Cookshousen, and my address is on file. Dr. Shear, Madam President and members of the board, I come to you tonight representing the staff at Stansbury Elementary. Since being told we were staying open for another year, we have been busy and are very excited about some great things happening at our school. First, we are pleased to share results of our end-of-the-year I-ready testing. Fifty-nine percent of our students are at the end-of-the-year proficiency in reading, while 75% are in their grade level band. This compares to 39% of students in the grade level band at the beginning of the year. In math, we have 66% of students who are in their grade level band. At the beginning of the year, we had 21% of our students who were in that band. Although this score wasn't as high as reading, we are pleased to see growth and achievement in both areas tested. Our teachers have worked hard this year despite the stress of not knowing whether or not we will remain open. Our students have worked equally hard and we're so proud of our team effort. Despite a possible bleary future, we have not given up. We are looking forward to launching our Leader in Me program at Stansbury in the fall. Our principal, Angie Garrity, has worked tirelessly to obtain funding to get our program off and running. She has secured some grants and other donations. We would like to thank the school district for supporting us financially and giving us the go-ahead to move forward. We would also like to thank the Loveland Chamber of Commerce for their generous donation. We held our first walkathon a couple of weeks ago, as you heard, and our families donated substantially as well toward the program. Finally, we are excited about the many projects that will be happening during our summer break as we prepare to implement the Leader in Me program. On May 29th and 30th, our staff will begin our training. This will be time spent learning more about the eight habits of highly effective people. Many of our staff members have already been living these habits. We have several action teams set up to makeover our school building. We will be making changes both inside and outside of our school to reflect the eight habits of highly effective children. Our goal is to have students feel that something new and exhilarating is happening as they begin the next school year. You see, we have already embraced Covey's Eight Habits. We are being proactive in forging ahead with our plans for the future. We are beginning with the end in mind. We have a plan for the next several years as we implement the Leader in Me. We hope you will come see our changes in the fall. We urge you to think about the positive results we have achieved this year and our plans for implementing the Leader in Me before you make any decision to close our school. Let's think win-win and plan for the future at Stansbury together. On a more personal note, Dr. Shear, we would like to personally thank you for nudging us to go forward with the Leader in Me. We wish you the best in your retirement, your leadership, strong character and your focus on the most important people our children will be missed.[1498.83][1498.83](applause)
So, we have Eric Kloss, followed by Tyler Goen. Have Eric Kloss, followed by Tyler Goen.
My name is Eric Kloss. This is my son Garrison. Garrison has started going to Stansbury here three, four weeks ago. As we're trying to find a home for Garrison that he can fit into, where he can learn, he can be part of a community, he can have friends, he can grow and he can be happy again. We have seen Garrison change over the last four weeks since he's joined Stansbury. He's participated in activities. He comes home, he's excited. He's actually excited about homework, which I've never seen him do before.
I'm not excited.[1570.83][1570.83](laughter)
Where do I go from there?
It's a different definition of excited, I think, for him and you. I get it.
His definition is different than mine.
I'm seven and year.
But at any rate, we've enjoyed to see the transition that Garrison has made, switching from one school to another, and the care that the teachers have given into him. And we hope that the school board can find a way to keep Stansbury open, to allow him and his brother to grow with a community of friends. Thank you.[1609.63][1609.63](applause)
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Shear and members of the board. My name is Tyler Goen, 98 East 42nd Street. I'm just a 1st grader at Stansbury. This is one-of-a-kind school. If you closed this school, we would not get to see Leader in Me. This year, I have to learn, to do the seven habits, like being proactive and beginning with the end in mind. My favorite habit is sharpening the saw. That means to eat healthy foods, get exercise and do calming things. Please don't close down my school.[1674.91][1674.91](applause)
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. All right, so that doesn't conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. We will move on to the action consent agenda. That's item 5.1, approval of personnel, extra duty, coaching recommendations, and 5.2, approval of gifts and donations. And if there's no objection, we'll take them up together as a pair unless anyone wants to pull anything off there. Terrific. I will entertain a motion to approve those two items or that consent agenda. So moved. And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the action consent items as presented. Pam, if you would read, I believe there's gifts and donations to read tonight?
There are. Actually, there's two. Looks like the Ponderosa PTA has been pretty busy. Ponderosa Elementary School will be receiving a donation of $7,000 going towards their running path from the Ponderosa PTA. And also, another donation of $5,496 for a shade structure from the Ponderosa PTA. So, thanks to all those folks.
Okay, thank you. No questions. If there's no questions, we'll just go ahead and move to the vote. Wendy?
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swanty?
Aye.
Thank you. Those items pass by a vote of seven to zero. We'll move into action items. So, what I'm going to do here, just to give you guys a heads up, I think we'll go through 6.4 and then we will take a little break before 6.5. Does that seem reasonable? Okay, just so you all know what we're doing too. All right, so item 6.1 is approval of Loveland Classical School Charter. All right, so item 6.1 is approval of Loveland Classical School Charter School Review. Dr. Crespo. You guys remember, this was presented to us last time, last meeting.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Dr. Shear, I'm here to answer any questions related to the Loveland Classical Charter School. I know that Ian Stout was also here, was here, there he is. That's what I'm here for.
Does anyone have any questions for either Dr. Crespo or Ian while he's here? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve that charter school review. Should that be a renewal, actually?
Well, it's the review for the renewal, so yes.
Review for the renewal, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Loveland Classical School Charter Review and Renewal. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. And Loveland Charter School, Loveland Classical School Charter Renewal has passed unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Next up is item 6.2, approval of the ESSA Policy Review, IKEA Grading Assessment System, and JFABE Students in Foster Care. And Board, if you remember, these were presented with changes last time around. Do we need anything further from Dr. Crespo or should we just entertain a motion to approve? Excellent. Well, I will entertain that motion.
I move we approve the IKEA. 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 IKEA and JFABE. I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the review, the revised policies, IKEA and JFABE. Is there any discussion? No, Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. And those two policies are passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next up is item 6.3, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Thompson School District and the Thompson Education Association. That's the MOU. Sorry, I'm feeling a little bit of the senioritis that my son is exhibiting at home and I'm, yeah, it's catching.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shear, Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer of this amazing district. What you have in front of you is the contract. We have talked about it the last, well, last meeting and the meeting before, so at this time, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions before I entertain a motion to approve? Okay.
I move that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Thompson School District and the Thompson Education Association.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Thompson School District and the Thompson Education Association. Is there any further discussion?
Congratulations to everybody involved. That was an amazing process, so, good job.
Yeah, I have to say, in the, what, five years that I've been doing this now, this, you know, kudos to the team that worked it out, went smoothly, quickly, good job.
And the biggest raise I think we've done in five years, so that's pretty exciting. Hopefully, it'll be a step towards attracting and retaining.
Okay, Wendy.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. And the MOU passes seven to zero.
At this time, I'd like to call up Andy Christmas, who's the Association President of the sign, and then I'll pass two copies to you to sign as well.
Okay, so we'll just take a second here to get these signed up.
Thank you, Board, for all of your listening and your bearing with us through this whole process. We really appreciate it.
And I don't know if we, thank you, and I don't know if we made a big enough deal about this last time when we brought this up, Andy, but this is a two-year contract. And that is amazing in and of itself, right there, so congratulations.
Congratulations, sir, yes. Congratulations. Good job.
All right, let's take five and a half, seven minutes, and we'll be back in a little bit. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call us back to order, please. Item 6.4, approval of the 2019-2020 calendar, which I was supposed to do before the break, but I'm doing it after the break. Dr. Sebers, do you have anything to present on that or, no? So, Board, you remember, okay, so Board, you remember, it was presented to us last time and it's basically, it's basically a repeat of this year's calendar with the appropriate dates because of the two-year Memorandum of Understanding. It makes sense to just continue the calendar for the next year. So I will, if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019-2020 calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Wendy, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. That calendar is approved, seven to zero, and I have to say that this might be a record for, a record for early approval of the calendar. So you guys can start planning your vacations for nineteen, 2019 and 2020, way out there. Okay. Next item up is item 6.5, which is the approval of relocation of current modulars, modular classrooms to Ivy Stockwell Elementary and Berthitt Elementary School. Dr. Crespo has some information for us on that.
I actually am just here to answer any questions that you may have related to the modular move. And wait for your response.
Any questions? No? All right, then I will entertain a motion for that approval.
I so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, excuse me, it's been moved and seconded to approve the relocation of the current modulars to Ivy Stockwell and Berthitt Elementary. Discussion. Paul?
Other than I'd just like to hear from other Board members, I've been waffling back and forth and it's one that growth is there, the obvious need is there, we went down there and visited. We don't want to have special programs out in the hallway in any school, but, you know, lots of things they're looking at, so I understand that. You know, on the flip side, I see that it is quite a bit of money, that we don't have a lot of money sitting around right now, so it does cost quite a bit. And is that money going into a short-term fix when we actually have a longer-term plan to deal with? So I'll be honest, I've been waffling back and forth. I mean, I'd just love to hear some other thoughts that would kind of help me out.
And my thought would be that it's not gonna get better if we don't move something down there right away. It's gonna take two or three years for the construction and everything to occur. And by the time that's done, they're gonna be exploding down there and they're gonna need more modulars. So I think that this is the right thing for us to do.
And then Pam and then Dave. I'll just go down the line.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out that if we don't do this, and even if the bond passes with the additional classrooms, we're still looking at a couple of years out to get those classrooms built. So to me, it's logical, it's necessary, and we need to do this for those students in the southern part of the district.
And then Dave?
Well, I think it's all been said. One point I'll add, none of us here know what attendance is gonna come next year or the year after. We all see the houses being built. We all know parents keep kids in school to complete the school year and then re-register their kids in the new school. What would happen if we get thirty, forty kids in either school? We're not prepared for it. That would be irresponsible on our part, so I recommend we accept the, we vote for this. Thank you.
Jeff, anything to add?
I think we need to do it.
Mark?
Just had a quick question, 'cause I think the recommendation has changed a little bit. So Berthitt Elementary for July of eighteen or Fall of eighteen, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. So our initial conversation was around making the decision for now or for depending after the bond based on the dates, so two things. Based on the decision related to the bonds and MLO, as well as the calendar, if it had been available or not available, based on timing for Ivy as well as Berthitt Elementary. Some of these organizations are already booked through the summer. That's not the case, but we left the language as it was, and then the bond-mill conversation to follow. The Board may have made a decision to hold off on Berthitt Elementary, put Ivy now, and then put Berthitt Elementary after the bond mill, depending on what the outcome was, and we left the language exactly as it was.
So, if I could clarify, Madam President, I, my, my motion was to approve modules at both Ivy and Berthitt Elementary, for clarity.
Correct. And I will weigh in. Paul, I'm a little bit more where you are. I'm actually gonna be a no vote on this. The cost of $288,000 for a temporary fix, you know, I see it as one to, at max, two years, and then they're gonna be potentially moved again or possibly destroyed to make way for classroom additions if we pass a bond. I looked at the numbers that you've provided us, at least as of now, and our best guess, you know, again, we never know really what's gonna happen, right? But our best guess is, right now Ivy's at, or Ivy has a capacity of 355 and there's a projection of 357 next year. Berthitt has a capacity of 480 and there's a projection of 471. So I don't see those numbers as having the urgency that I would feel we need to move forward with this. There are at least two other schools that I know of in the district that are also at capacity, near capacity or over capacity, and we're not considering, and I'm not suggesting we consider for those two either, but we're not considering for those either, and they've been at or over capacity for a number of years. So at this point, you know, I went down there, I visited the schools, yes, they're doubling up on some of the enrichment class, or not the enrichment classes, but the, not the specials, but the, what do you call it?
Special services.
The special services, yeah, thank you. They're doubling up on that, but to be honest, I've seen that in my kids' schools for years where people share rooms, you know, the English-language acquisition teacher shares room with a GT teacher, or the, you know, whatever occupational therapist shares room with a speech therapist, those kinds of things. So I wasn't seeing the kind of crowding that I had expected to see. I know it feels tight down there, I get that, and I get that it's gonna be a little tight for another year or two if we don't do this, but I feel that spending $288,000 now when we're already in a deficit budget situation for a temporary solution is just not comfortable to me.
I have one other question.
All right, hold on, let me go to Paul and then back to you, Dave.
I did have one question. So the schools that the modules are coming from, Garfield, Conval, and Namakwa, are they not being used for anything there or is it gonna, is there gonna be an impact on those schools if you take them away? How are they gonna have to adjust?
So they will be impacted in some cases. In some cases, it's just used for storage or there are small classroom spaces in there and one is, is it a staff lounge that they're using outside? Yeah, and then one of them is a staff lounge. So it will be, there is an impact, but not student, not student classrooms, like first grade, second grade, third grade.
And that's not the intent with these either, right? They're not gonna be classrooms 'cause they're dry, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Our hope, yes.
And Dave?
The only retort I would like to offer is the difference between the Berthitt schools and the other schools that are at capacity is the great, great volume of construction that's going on within those schools' boundaries, immediately adjacent to those schools. So one of the arguments that I think are very important is we don't know how many kids are gonna come. You say there's two kids more, we don't know what's coming, and we have to be prepared for that. And we don't know if a bond will pass. So for all those reasons, I offer those reasons. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Wendy, if you could call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
No.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes six to one. Next item up then becomes 6.6, which is Action Regarding School Closure Timeline.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Dr. Shear, Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer. I'm here to cover the school closure recommendation conversation according to the Board policy approved in January. We are on a timeline for decision points, and that timeline includes the following. February of 2016, Board of Education charged Master Plan Committee to assess any need for closing schools, and was presented a closure analysis. As you remember, in January 2017, we provided an update on those and then talked about underutilization and that service level, and we initiated that timeline. In January of 2018, we identified service level U and the criteria was solidified and shared with the Board based on year-two, October-one count and enrollment projections for the following year. In May of 2018, here we are. We are at the point of asking for a decision to proceed or not proceed with school closure timeline, which includes things like community engagement with impacted schools, meeting with the departments, making sure that we're doing the budgetary timeline, transportation, reassignment for staff, facility use, and notification. The notification would be for the June 30th, 2019 year, so the following August, our full closure would occur by June 30th, 2019. And here are the numbers based on where we are, 2017 and 18, based on the criteria and the continuous remaining seat available under utilization, Stansbury and Van Buren Elementary. Those projections remain the same for the following year. Based on the Board policy, we're looking at what that would impact, and the potential savings include, you can see those numbers, 16-17 Stansbury numbers. And Mr. Jones is here. If we have any more specific questions related to those two, you can see those numbers there, actual what the benefit services are based on the budget codes, and then some financial information below that.
Questions, Board?
My question, I'm still trying to pinpoint down cost savings. I know you included in here actual expenditures, but the savings aren't gonna be the same as the actual expenditures. Again, I've heard every, from $250,000 to over a million, so I'm just really trying to, what would be the projected savings for closing each of these schools?
And then while you're answering that, mine is a piggyback on that. Explain what the eighty percent versus the full. I wasn't clear on what that meant, so.
Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the Board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Those questions go hand in hand, actually, so if I may offer some clarification on what the document you're looking at is. The first line for each one of the schools that has been listed are actual expenditures that were coded to that school in the 16-17 financial records that have been audited and approved by the Board and by the independent auditor, obviously. So that's to say, for 2016-17 for Stansbury, the actual expenditures were $1,586,108. Those are what was coded to the school by the location code in the general ledger accounting system. So I reflect that by each one of the program codes that you see above for salaries, benefits, services, supplies, and materials and so forth. Those are CDE mandated chart of accounts that we have to put expenditures in the proper category, so that's what that, what the heading on each one of those is showing. So of the $1,586, I put-
Hold on a second, Gordon.
Sorry.
Could you give us that number again? I'm not sure I'm looking in the right spot. You said actual expenditures, and what was the number you said?
For Stansbury, for the 16-17 school year, was $1,586,108.
On page two, bottom of page two.
The all column.
All right, I see. Thank you.
Certainly. So the next line that you see, the eighty percent figure, was just put for reference purposes for the Board. If there were, because obviously we're in the 17-18 school year now, I wanted to use a full-year cost estimate, or actual costs, in this case, not estimates, but the actual costs that are associated with that. In the current year, costs could be a little higher than that, they could be a little lower than that. higher than that, they could be a little lower than that, but the intent with the, with the 80% figure that is shown there is if there are residual costs that remain in the building. So, for example, depending if the school was scheduled for closure following the timeline that Dr. Crespo just referred to, if there were a repurposing of that school that was directed by the board, there could be utility costs that would remain in that school. If it was being used for some other purpose, there, there could be some, some costs like that that would be still incurred. If those, if the school is slated for closure, does close, and the students move to other schools, there's going to be some level of supplies that would follow those students. The 80% figure is intended just to give a buffer or an idea of what a, and I don't want to say worst-case scenario would be from a savings standpoint, but what the savings could look like if there were some residual costs. The intent from the salaries and benefits line is that those licensed staff in any buildings that are being considered here would be absorbed into other buildings, much like the students would be absorbed into other buildings. We would do that through attrition. Every year, there's attrition of licensed staff that would exceed the number of teachers in those buildings, so the licensed staff would be absorbed into other schools just like the students would be planned to do. So, I don't know if that provides the level of clarity that you were looking for or not.
Still not there.
So, so to state it another way, because I'm kind of a little bit where you are, and just, just take Stansberry for example, because they're the first one up here. Are you comfortable in stating that the savings at the 80%, the actual expenditures at 80%, that would be the savings, the 1.2 and change in the first year?
That's what I would propose at this time, based on the actual cost from the 1617 school year, an 80% conservative figure, an estimate at this point, no doubt, but a estimate that is associated with solid analytics, I would say, as well, based on actual expenditures from 1617.
And the reason we're not just, so people know, the reason we're not using 1718 is because those numbers have not been audited yet, so we're, you know, we use the best figures we have, the audited figures from 1617. Does that help, Paul?
Maybe. So, you're saying that the staff would move from these schools and fill in other positions through attrition? So, that implies that we'd actually be losing positions across the district because we close these schools, we'd have less teaching positions? It seems like they're leaving some kids they're already teaching, so we got to get a teacher to, and we still have these kids that are moving, so you're going to need a teacher to teach. I'm not sure how we're going to reduce FTE.
The first part of your statement, I would say, yes, that is true. We would have, under this scenario, we would have fewer teachers in the district than we have right now. Because we would have attrition every year that's naturally going to occur, these teachers, the licensed staff at these schools would be absorbed into the system. It's not as simple as saying that if there's, just to use a, pick a figure, if there's 150 students at, at Stansberry, those 150 students more than likely are not going to transfer to one particular school, first because another school in the district, one single school, may or may not be able to handle that student capacity. And keep in mind that this is over six grades, K through, K through five, so that 150 students is spread across six different levels, if you will, or grades. Those students are not all going to be going to one particular classroom, so it's, it would seem unlikely that 25 students from a school that would be closing would go to the same school somewhere else in the district, which in that case would require retention of a position. But if they are dispersed among several schools, more than likely those, those students, as well as the positions, would be absorbed into the existing, the remaining infrastructure after these two schools.
Or even to one school with multiple rounds. You've got a school with two rounds of second grade, you can absorb some that way.
And certainly with the help of HR and Dr. Sebers, we're always looking at that when enrollment in a classroom isn't what, what we anticipate in the budget. So, we have ratios that we use when, when creating staffing plans for the different buildings, assuming the number of students that are going to be there. If that number suddenly escalates, Dr. Sebers does a great job of going out and, and looking at those classrooms, interviewing the teachers, looking at what the needs are of that particular class, and then the district is committed to either adding a, an aide, or if, if the numbers warrant, a full-time teacher or licensed staff at that position in that school.
Dr. Crespo, where are you going to add? So, someone help me, I guess I'm still being slow because I'm hearing that we're going to have the same number of students being taught by a lot fewer teachers.
Well, they're going to be filling some of the seats in those other schools that are currently empty. So, that's one way to look at it, I guess. I'm not saying it's-
So, are we thinking we have enough classrooms that are, the class enrollment is so low right now that they can actually absorb all these kids, or a classroom's full and is going to make them even fuller?
Aye. So, just for clarification, as you remember, there's a list of nine schools that have underutilization, so, and because we're 44% choice, that absorption will happen in other buildings. Typically, when we look at those models as to why we're closing a building for underutilization, that's in that chapter that we talk about closure. Part of that discussion also talks about schools where we'd be sending those students, so clearly we wouldn't send them to a building that is already at the capacity or overcapacity. We're looking at those enrollment numbers that are within range to absorb those students in a really seamless way. That doesn't take into consideration the choice conversation, but for the most part, we know that those students would be absorbed easily because there are so many buildings that are under, underutilized right now.
The whole building utilization, yes, but they can absorb them into those buildings without adding teachers?
Correct, but the absorption would happen for attrition when you're talking about staff being moved. So, essentially, I think what you're asking is, will those teachers lose their position because those positions are gone? And essentially, no, that isn't the case. Due to attrition every year, we'll be able to absorb those people who have been here while still maintaining the cost savings, because you're diminishing the number of teaching positions in the district.
That's the math. I'm just trying to figure, is how we're going to teach the same number of kids with fewer teachers without class sizes exploding on us?
Sure. We have underutilization in other buildings and easily would be able to absorb those.
Anybody else? Questions down here? Jeff?
This is obviously a hypothetical question. I realize how difficult it would be to answer, but what kind of conversations have taken place on possible number of students that we might lose to Pooter or charter schools, et cetera, because Stansberry's no longer an option?
So, certainly part of our conversation as we move forward, assuming that the board makes the decision for us to continue, would be to go out to those families specifically. The numbers are small enough that we could have those face-to-face, one-on-one discussions and just ask them, where are you thinking about going? Here are the contributions that we can make. This is what it looks like for the buildings that you're interested in. What does choice feel like for you? Here's the building that's designated. Here's where Leader and Me will go. All of those, all of those pieces, we can take advantage of because it is a small, for both buildings. They are small buildings. So, our goal would be to go to each building, and that timeline is outlined as well, meet with families and students, and connect with them about what are their interests, where are they going, what does that mean, and then make assessments from there. We do know that we've got space in, in buildings across the district, and we do know that we want to support, anytime you do a closure, it's not easy, but you want to make sure that you're supporting those families through that transition. And, and certainly there is the potential that, that families will leave the district, and we certainly hope not, but we will make every, every effort to meet with individual families to make sure that they feel comfortable moving. Again, it's not easy for anybody, so we want to make sure it's as easy as possible for the students and parents and staff.
And as far as the building itself, we use the terminology to repurpose. Is there some thought as to how we'd repurpose that building? Are we thinking we'll sell that building? That will certainly be important to the neighborhood, too, on having a vacant school building and what it might become in the neighborhood.
Correct, and I think that what, one of the things that's important for the board as we go through this process, we'll be coming back with lots of options. There are always opportunities. The board may direct and say, we want to sell that property, any of the properties that we close. It could be any one of all the buildings. Specifically, in these two scenarios, there, there are sale options, there are repurpose options, there, we have, we've done some analysis around what are the needs in the community. Is, is it an early childhood opportunity? Is it an opportunity for a conference center? Just in our general conversations with community, they've provided some ideas through Master Plan as well. We've, we certainly have talked about other buildings that right now that are running out of space, and what does that mean, and how do we, we help build programs within the district so that they stay here. There are lots of options that we certainly would bring to the board, once we have a conversation with the community in a more in-depth way. These are all very peripheral kind of informal discussions. You're welcome.
Mark?
Dr. Crespo, thank you for providing the information on the student achievement. That was very helpful. One question that I have is what conversations have we had so far about the Effective Needs Program, and what options do we have in the district for relocating?
That's a great question. So, we actually have a number of Effective Needs Programs throughout the district, as well as other specialized programs, and we would make sure that that transition is as smooth as it was going to that building, going someplace else. We certainly, based on population and based on systems, move, move those, move those district programs based on what the needs are and how large the population is. So, it's not unusual for us to relocate a program, and we would do the same thing. We would communicate with families. Our exceptional student director would make sure that those communications are going out, and that staff and students and, and parents and community are aware of what that transition looks like. Interestingly enough, we move those programs more often than we close a school, so they're a little bit more used to it. It's not great, but they are used to it, and we've been able to transition them well.
Pam? And this is along the same, same lines of moving programs. What do you foresee happening to Leader and Me if we were to close Stansberry? Is there a process or a plan in place yet, or is that to be determined?
Yes, so I'll, I'll answer twofold. One, we are very committed to Leader and Me, as we are committed to all of our programs in the district. Leader and Me is a great, great opportunity for students to really engage in those life skills in the eight habits. Having said that, I think that part of the conversation, to Mr. Swante's point, is really having that discussion with families and saying, where are the, where is the most number? Like, where are most of these kids going? What does that look like? How do we transfer this program? And certainly, as was mentioned during public comment, we absolutely have provided that support and will continue to provide that support, and are grateful for, for the staff and the students and the community for embracing that, and we would simply just move it to wherever that population would go.
I just have a comment that we asked you to put forward a plan, and it doesn't make it any easier for us. So, I appreciate that. My question, I have one question then about this. Once we move forward on the timeline, that is a definite set that this is the direction it's going to go. It's not just that you're going to explore these things, it's, it's in place, correct?
Yes, and I, here's what I would say. We would, here's the consideration that, that the board really needs to think about at this point. We've had this conversation for a number of years. Many times, we've had families stand up here and say, we just want to know, right? It, it would be, whatever the decision is, that's the decision. And, and what does that mean for community and families? We'll have to deal through that process. And again, I will say, I've done it. It's not easy. It's hard, but we are committed to making this as easy as possible if that's the direction the board goes. There is a plan in place. There will be single meetings. We will communicate with individuals and recognize that it's not, that's not easy, but we do need permission to move forward based on the timeline and then go from there.
At this point, unless you have another, another question, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Yeah, so I better, just say this. So, I know there's two schools on there that we, there may be a motion. I mean, is there any thoughts or considerations of one over the other? Not both of them, one of them not? I mean, they're both in front of us, but I have different feelings about each of the schools and could possibly vote differently based on each of those schools. I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts around that.
So, I'll just add to, to your point. When we first came, there were six buildings. So, I, I don't have an opinion either way. I just want you to have all of the information. We're down to two. Yes, sir.
And there are nine schools currently with less than 75%
Correct.
enrollment.
Correct.
So, at this point, Board, I believe that staff would like us to take some action on this, and I will entertain a motion to continue down the, the school closure timeline.
So, moved.
And I'll look for a second.
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded to continue down the school closure timeline for Stansberry and Van Buren Elementary. Is there any further discussion? Jeff?
I guess I'd like to say that there, there are some things you can't measure, like the emotional impact this is going to have on students in the neighborhood and the teachers, and that's what makes this decision so hard. And there's a couple of schools of thought. We've been criticized for not closing schools when we're having budget issues, and at same time, I'm concerned that we may be going to the public and asking them to approve a bond where we might build new schools, and we haven't totally looked at changing school boundaries and busing. It just seems like there's so many issues here. I, I just have a real hard time at this point supporting, closing the schools. I would say especially Stansberry, I, I feel like they're on track. They've been very, very supportive of the district in the past. Anything we've tried to do from bond and mills to showing up at these meetings, trying to get the better grades, and now they have this new program. They're, they're hanging their star. There's a lot of hope out there. I just, I'm concerned that we're bailing out on them too soon.
I share Dave's concerns. I share Jeff's concerns as well. We've, I have agonized over this topic. This is a really, really hard issue. We have to be fiscally responsible. Thank you so much for the Master Planning Committee, Dr. Crespo, providing all the information that, that we've been provided with. I've done a lot of reading. I've talked to people in other districts. I'm very concerned about the estimates of what we're hopefully going to save in general. What I've seen is that it's not as much as you, you'd expect. There are a lot more unforeseen costs. You can't put a price tag on building community, and I see that. I see that at Stansberry. This is a tough decision. I feel like, as a district, you know, we cut, and we've cut, and we've cut, and yet we're continually asked to cut more. At some point, we can't. We just can't cut anymore. There's got to be a better answer.
Anybody else?
I just hate that we have a plan now that we, we had asked for it and felt like it was going to be down the road, and now here it is with us again, and that's really making it difficult for us.
It's by far one of the toughest decisions we have to make as a board, and I guess I keep looking at our, our fiscal responsibility. We are stewards of taxpayer money, and if we, it looks like the combined cost savings, if I'm doing my math correctly, Gordon, is about $2,400,000. That's, that's a pretty big piece of our budget, and even if it's, you know, a little bit less, let's say it, you know, drops down a half a million or so, we're still looking at almost a $2 million savings, which I think for the good of the whole, I think we can make sure those students are aware, are well-cared-for elsewhere in the district, and, and use that, that money, that $2 million to, you know, improve the education around the district and other elementary schools that are going to see these students attending if, if this does happen. So, I do see that as a plus, and I, I also see a plus, as we've talked about, you know, the specials classes that, you know, are just really tough to get in these schools. A lot of, there are these two schools, and the, you know, the combined classes we've had to have at these two schools, those sorts of things have been negatively impacting students' education, so those are just a couple of my thoughts, as I, once again, struggle. This is just really difficult.
I, you know, and I'll echo what everyone else has said. This is a very difficult decision, and none of us take this lightly. It's not a reflection on the academic achievement of the students at either school. It's not a reflection of the quality of the staff and teachers at either school, and it does, there does come a point when the size of this, the, the small size of the school can be a hindrance to, I believe, and, and some of what I- can be a hindrance to, I believe, and some of what I've read leads me to believe that the very small size of the school can be a hindrance to the kids' best chance for their best education. It doesn't make it any easier.
Anybody else? Mark?
In a lot of my reading, I've looked at a lot of other school districts, and we're not unique, unfortunately, in having this problem. In general, what I've read is, again, that, you know, you'll enter into a decision like this with the best of intentions, and frequently, you end up being surprised with the outcome and the results. Very frustrating, because it feels like a no-win scenario.
Elaborate that a little bit. Help me understand what you're saying there.
I think we've touched on it. You know, there's no way to predict. We live in a school-of-choice state. There's no way to predict what our council, how our council will be affected or by how much. You know, one thing that I have read that's very encouraging is that by being very open and very transparent with the community, making sure that they understand that we're trying our absolute best to make the best decision that we can for our school district, and that we really care first and foremost about the students, that can make the transition easier. It can make it easier. I've toured a lot of schools in our district. I've toured the, especially focusing on the areas affected. And we have fantastic schools. We have amazing people that care very, very deeply for our students. They want the absolute best for our kids. And so, I know that if we close these schools and the students are moved to another school, they'll be taken care of and they'll be cared for. And the community will welcome them with open arms. My biggest concern is that risk that we take with the community that we have built and making sure that we take care of that community.
I think, are we ready for a vote? Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Nay.
Jeff, oh, sorry. Jeff Swanee?
No.
So, the motion passes five to two on the action regarding the school closure timeline. Yes, sir.
If I could, just a moment. One, I want to thank and congratulate the public speakers who have come many times to our meeting, how polite they were, how respectful they were. And I, and speaking for myself and I think the other board members, we encourage it to continue. Mark, you made the comment, we need to understand what issues they might have. As Dr. Crespo said, she's going to go out and, or the district will go out and try to meet each individual family. We encourage that and continue to encourage any public comment.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Next up is item 6.7, approval of the Master Plan Committee options.
Evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Shear, Margaret Crespo, and Kristen Battey is here as well to help us through this process. As you know, we've come repeatedly over the last couple of months based on the charges. MPC worked diligently for a long time, and here we are. So, bond packages and MLO information is attached in both scenarios.
I have one quick question, just a clarification on what's presented here. On package, let's see, you put Package 2A and then Package 3. And it looks like in Package 3, it looks like Berthet and Ivy are in there twice. Is that, am I misunderstanding?
So, in Package 2A, Ivy, Stockwell, and Berthet are called out explicitly. We broke down between 2 and 3. So, it's Package 2 plus the additions to Ivy, addition of, whoo! Additions to Ivy, Stockwell, and Berthet Elementary. And then Package 3 includes those two plus Garfield Elementary and Trusket Consolidation.
Specifically called it out in 3, okay. And it is 2A. It is?
It is 2A, yes.
Yeah, 2A is a new one. It's kind of stuck in there between 2 and 3. Okay, all right. All right. Questions, Board?
I want to clarify what we're approving here. We're just approving these as possible packages. We're not approving this as a whole.
I think, tonight, can we choose a package? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess.
Can we choose one of the packages?
Might understand, if we talked last time, what we're going to vote on is whether or not to go for Mill and Bond and not necessarily the packages.
Which is what I thought we were doing.
And what I don't want to do tonight is make a decision on a package.
Get locked in.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. I think it's, I think it might be a good idea to be more specific than just, we're going to go for a bond, rather than not. Somewhere between locking us into Package whatever and we're going to put something on the ballot. Dave?
First, my recollection of our workshop meeting was we were going to recommend a package. That was my recollection, whether it's correct or not. And second, when you say we're going to vote for something, we have to vote for something. To say we're going to have a bond is meaningless unless we say what it is. So, in my mind, I'm prepared to vote, recommend, make a motion and vote for a particular package. We've been, you know, it's time for us to make that decision. Let me say this, too. I thought we also discussed and agreed to, in principle at least, at our workshop meeting, that what we are doing here is a board is giving direction to staff to develop these packages further, including refining the scope and refining the cost estimate. And all of that will be decided by this board in a pretty tight final form by the end of this school year, by the end of June.
By the end of June.
Yeah, so we go to the community and say, "This is what we are recommending." We have researched this, discussed this, debated it, and here's our recommendation.
And that was my understanding as well, Dave, from the study session.
Because the notes should pass me under the table after the last meeting, right?
Yeah, we were having that conversation. I guess I was under, and I don't want to jump this too quickly, but I just, I thought we had kind of, you know, discussed. And it seemed like we had a general idea that Package 2A, which is the maintenance backlog, safety and security upgrades, IT upgrades, charter school, K-8 east of I-25, and then additions to Ivy, Stockwell, and Berthet Elementary. Maybe I misunderstood our study session. That's where I felt like the majority of us were kind of landing on, just for several reasons. I don't think any of us are comfortable with going with a $311 million bond, right? Last time in 2016, the bond that was proposed was $288 million. So, I think we listened pretty carefully to the public in cutting out almost $140 million. This is a pared-down version if we're going to look at Package 2A. We're almost cutting the bond from 2016 in half. You know, there's no new high school. There's no Berthet pool. There's no, you know, the whole Thompson reinvented plan is no longer in it. This is really meat and potatoes. So, that was just, you know, I guess I was more along the same lines of Dave as I feel like we do need to give staff direction on what we want to move forward with, and we need to give the public that information as well. Time is ticking. I mean, we are really, the clock is moving quickly. So, I guess my preference would be to figure out which package tonight.
I think we were not, as you mentioned, Dave, that we would, as we refine the numbers and the costs, I think we had agreed not to tie ourselves down to a total number tonight.
Yes, I agree with, I agree with that.
And somebody down here, Paul and Mark?
Just want to make sure that's what I'm hearing, that we could be voting on a package that we think we're generally in the ballpark, but there's still plenty of time to go up and down and base on public input and all that. We're not locking into that, okay?
Because until we go to ballot, there's no ballot language tonight. We're good.
In fact, I would, just to reinforce your point, Paul. I have, now that you support the motion, I've given that direction. But I want to make two additional motions. One, to direct staff to refine scope and cost estimates in a certain manner. Well, that would be a follow-up motion that I would do. So, just in answer to your, just to reinforce your understanding. Clarify, reinforce it maybe.
But you're not making those motions yet?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear that we're still discussing, and that's fine. I think Mark and then Jeff.
So, I know we had discussed it a little bit in the work session, but I was hoping to make sure that we got this open in a public meeting. Could you run down for me just kind of a quick, brief description, kind of like three bullet points, on each of the different components that make the packages different? For example, the K-8 east of I-25, and some of the thought behind that recommendation? And then just move through the Garfield-Trusket consolidation, Irwin addition, Conrad-Ball, Mary Blair campus reconfiguration, the West Berthet K-5 school, the Northwest K-5 school, and the district sports complex?
Okay, so, starting with Package 2, because we know what Package 1 looks like. The addition piece on the east side of the district, that K-8 is based significantly on growth. We have enough students right now that we would meet the needs of that community and have been waiting for quite a while. When you add the additions to Ivy and Berthet, that brings up the discussion related to growth that was raised before around continuing growth in that area and how do we find a more permanent solution for those students? Package 3, that conversation from Master Plan came from providing an opportunity. Garfield-Trusket is, will be there. It's a city school in terms of, in the center of the city. And we want to make sure that we keep up with what that looks like and that those students have the same opportunities for new and innovative opportunities in classrooms and spaces and what that looks like as education continues to change. We had met, actually, with that community a few years back. Dr. Shear and Skip had gone out, and the community was very engaged in having that possibility. Because when you look at that area continuing to grow and becoming a little bit more, continues to become a little more urban, you want to make sure that you're meeting the needs of those students, and that consolidation is helpful. In Con-Ball-Mary Blair campus configuration, when you think about the east side of the community, that community still continues to grow as well. And you have a brand-new shiny building on the, both now, assumingly east of I-25, as well as High Plains. You want to make sure that you're including those communities and just reconfiguring that process and that campus so that we're getting the traffic off, for safety and security reasons, off of 29th Street, because that parking is really difficult in the morning, if you've ever been there, getting those kids dropped off. And then the same for the, just the revamping of what Con-Ball looks like in terms of a little more sun shield, so that the parking lot, the kids that are playing out in the playground is not as hot. It's asphalt, so that's difficult when they're out there, the parking area as well out there. And then just the innovations needed for education. Athletic upgrades. We don't have lights. So, as a great example, we don't have lights. Often, when we want to play and practice, there's additional costs if we get to use the lights in some of our partner facilities, because we don't have them. We're limited on our outdoor athletic components, as well as both of our fields are not turf. So, you're trying not to, and you can, you know, ask the grounds crew, because they want to kill us every year. Get off the grass! Because when it starts coming up, like, we're destroying it by having kids on it all the time. So, that would update. The other pieces, too, that it also helps us with our athletic playing fields, because a lot of them are very difficult to line, are not the right size configuration. The tracks are very, very old and, you know, safe and appropriate, but really not what we want for premium kinds of opportunities for students to be able to participate in athletic and PE activities. And then Package 5 would be to get ahead. Those are, all of the ones I mentioned are just getting us caught up to where we need to be as a community. And then adding Package 5 would move us ahead four to 10 years so that the community understands that we actually do have a 10-year plan and what does that look like. And that would include the West Berthet K-5 school, which is that additional growth. As we, east Berthet K-5 school, sorry about that. Turner, and I know it's wrong there. Turner Middle School renovation in addition, because those students that were now feeling the impact at Berthet and Ivy will then go to Turner. So, that's a four to 10-year out. We'll need a Northwest Loveland K-5, because of the growth in that Northwest quadrant that we're looking at and still seeing growth up there. A district sports complex, so that we have not just lights, but a complex that meets the requirements for us to have conference-level athletic events at high school. We have incredible athletic teams, and we actually don't have a conference-appropriate football field in the district. And then building four priorities, if you remember that we've got those high deferred, nope, maintenance backlog, we've only gotten through those first couple. We still have other high-level priority needs, four through nine and beyond, as well as planning for the future, because obviously, it's like anything else. The minute that you fix a boiler, now your roof leaks. So, how do you make sure that you're keeping up with that? And that's that discussion as the last one there.
And so, for clarification, because there's, I believe there's growth on both the west side of Berthet and the east side of Berthet. And so, from a planning perspective, where do we see the growth happening first, west or east?
Both. Yep, pretty much everywhere. And actually, it's my error. It is west. I, I'm someplace else.
So, that should say east, east Berthet, not west Berthet.
It should say east. I'm not from here, so like, if I'm not looking at the mountains, I don't know what was west.
You do live in Berthet though, Mary, so.
Yeah, I know that we drove by and we saw the property on the west side of Berthet. But do we have property allocated on the east side as well?
Yes. You don't want to say this too loud, but we actually go all the way almost to Johnstown. We actually go to Johnstown. They don't really like us to say that, so hopefully, they're not listening.
Okay. And then, one of the questions that I got from somebody in the community regarding the maintenance backlog, which now I believe spans a decade or so?
Yeah, plus or minus three years.
So, when you have a 100-year building, how many gears does that take off the life of the building if you've got backlog maintenance for a decade?
I would say a really long time, no. At least, for every 10 years, when you're talking about, like, we can't replace certain boilers. We have to take them out, because they don't even make the parts. Like, I kid you not, we're on eBay looking for a lot of stuff that's out there. We have a building that is on septic. Just saying.
That Big T?
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, that's ugly, right? Like, we had a little problem today, and all of us were like, "Oh, my gosh! Please don't back up." So, those are things that need to get fixed. And when you have buildings that are that old, those are certainly consequences. And here comes Kristen to elbow me out, so hold on.
So, just to kind of add to that, it's not that you're taking away from the life of the building, like, we're not going to shut the building down. It just adds to that cost when you actually make those repairs. Because maybe originally, you're able to fix a portion of the roof. If you don't get to that, then it's going to be the whole roof. So, it just adds those costs. It's not that the building will fall down. Does that answer your question, kind of?
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of the same thing, because at some point, you're going to tip over the edge where the cost of maintaining and that building just doesn't make sense. You just want to replace it with another.
She just wants to say publicly that nothing's going to fall down on us.
That's good to know.
And, you know, I can't speak to Big T, because I don't know what's gone out there. But I do know that Bill Reed, the other 100-year-old building, was upgraded in a bond in 19, about 23, 25 years ago. So, a bunch of, so, a bunch of what's, like, windows were replaced. It was a pretty massive, I mean, the bricks are the same bricks, but it was a pretty massive upgrade of the interior of the building, the windows, additions on, systems, I'm assuming, were totally upgraded. So, I don't know that it, like, the building, yes, is 100 years old, but the guts maybe aren't. Is that a fair assessment? The guts are better shaped? In some cases, yes. I mean, a roof is still a roof, and it only lasts so long.
Asbestos is still.
Right, asbestos is still there, yeah.
And we do take into consideration the cost-to-replace value. That was part of that Thompson reinvented plan. It listed that cost, or current replacement value. So, what it would cost for us to actually replace that versus what that deferred maintenance or maintenance backlog, what those numbers look like. So, we can provide those as well.
And just to clarify, so everybody knows that in this $94 million, each and every school in the district will be addressed, correct? There will be improvements made, upgrades made. So, each and every student in the district will, you know, see the benefits of those upgrades and those improvements. So, I think that's important to keep in mind as well. This is, this is for all of our students across the district, no matter which school they attend, which is, I mean, that part's pretty exciting. And it, you know, we had that student come the other night at MPC and said, "You know, I started kindergarten, and I'm graduating, and this community has never passed a Mill and Bond the whole time I've been in this district." And she just felt really like, where's the community? Why aren't they supporting me? And that was pretty stunning, I think, to a lot of us, to realize that kids have gone their entire K-12 careers and then never seen the benefits of a Mill and Bond, so.
So, am I here, and we're ready to make a motion here?
I'm not ready.
Jeff? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry.
I'm far from ready. In fact, I'm very surprised that our conversation here, if you look at our agenda, it shows we have five minutes set aside for this tonight, which would imply that we came to some kind of consensus in our study session. And I would have to disagree with that. We did not come to any type of consensus, other than we felt like we wanted to vote on whether to go for a mill and bond. But as far as breaking it down, I don't feel we've done enough research. I don't think that we should be making that decision without more meetings. And I hear what you're saying, Dave, and everybody else, that you want, you want to make a decision. I just don't feel we're in a position to make that decision tonight, and certainly not within five minutes.
Again, we're not making a final decision. We're making, here's where we are at this point in time, so that we can get feedback from the community and adjust as necessary.
I believe tonight, we need to make a decision to move forward with the bond or not to move forward with the bond. We've been talking about this for months. The community's asking, literally begging us to make a decision of some kind.
I'm okay with that, and I agree with that, but not as far as picking a package here. For instance, saying Package Five for $311 million, I don't, I don't think we should be having these conversations, though we've had a lot more conversation. I think the only thing we're prepared for is to say, yes, we know we need a bond. We know, for instance, that we have $92 million in deferred maintenance that needs to be taken care of. We know we have growth issues in Berthod, but there's so much more here.
Again, I will only speak for myself, but I came away from the study session thinking that we were pretty much agreed on maintenance backlog, the K-8 additions, and, now, we weren't unanimous on that, but we were, you know, mostly agreed on those four things: the additions, the school, and the maintenance backlog. I guess that's three things. Which would essentially give us Package 2A, but we don't have to call it Package 2A. You know, we can call out those things and, or not.
Because I felt like at the study session, we had all agreed, we liked the, the package, I'll just keep calling it 2A, that's what we have in front of us, combined with the mill levy override of $14 million, because that kept the tax under $1 a day. And when we were working on the whiteboard, I thought that's what we had come to agreement on of, keep it under $1 a day. That's the $149 million bond. And as, as we say, we still have time to massage this, right? I mean, there's no ballot language coming tonight, but I think it would be really helpful for staff to know that they can, as Dave said, it's time to contact the architects, and, I mean, some of that's already been done, but to do it a little deeper and get them going on the actual, is the K-8 school, is $49 million really, is that really the amount? Or, you know, are we going to look at different things? So that's just what I remembered from the study session, and that photo that Dr. Shear sent us of the whiteboard that we had worked on with this 149 million plus the $14 million in the mill levy, got us to under $1 a day.
And I also think if we start to call out some of these things specifically, we're going to start to hear from the community. We're either going to hear people saying, "Are you out of your minds?", or "Go for that plus?", or, you know, "What do you mean by a school on the other side of the interstate? Where might that be?" I think that community maybe will start asking questions.
Or those 16 acres.
Right. So, you know, there, I think, I think that's what we need to do in order to get some of the feedback that we need to flesh this out some more. Oh, thank you, Ian. So, again, if somebody would like to make a, Dave?
I move that the board directs staff, or that we adopt, in principle, Package 2A, and we then proceed with further direction to staff after we approve that, on how to develop and refine the scope of work and associated cost estimates.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded to move ahead with essentially Package 2A, and then to have staff come back with some more specific numbers, which will, we will refine.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have a second motion to give the specific direction about that.
Yep. Any further discussion, Board? Okay, Wendy.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Board. That was 7-0 to move forward with that bond package.
Madam President?
Or that potential bond package, yes.
So, in the follow-up, here are some thoughts that I have that, or the reasons for me making the motion I will make in a few minutes. One, the community, some members of the community with absolutely supporting Thompson School District are not sure of the, the cost estimates. They just say, gee, this doesn't look right to me. We love the school district, we want to move forward, it doesn't look right to me. I think the district has done a wonderful job in preparing cost estimates. They use their own data, which is the best data there is. My background, of course, is construction, so I'm familiar with this, this procedures and stuff. But I think to, if I could use the phrase, make our estimates bulletproof, I would advise that we authorize staff to come back to us with a proposal, including hiring outside consultants to prepare estimates. We would hire the architect to refine the scope, a little bit of the new construction. We would review the maintenance figures with an outside estimating service, and I would ask staff to come back with us with proposal. I'm guessing this is going to cost somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000, so I just want to put a ballpark number out there. But I think we cannot leave stones unturned in our determination to get this to pass. So my recommendation, my motion is that the board directs staff to submit to us a proposal at the next meeting for hiring outside consultants and the scope of work and their, and their cost proposal to refine it, fully recognizing that work will be completed in the summer, but at least that means we could load this onto our website, say, August or September, and say, here's what we're delivering to you, item by item. Here's the cost estimate prepared for by this independent estimating company with no vested interest in Thompson schools, and we produce a credible proposal to the public. Long winded, but that's my proposal.
So that's, that's a basic motion. Is there, is there a second to that? Is that, that was your motion, right?
That's my motion, that we ask staff, I'll just say it again, because it was long. We ask staff to come back with a proposal to have an outside consultant refine the scope and the cost proposal.
And a second to that? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to have staff come back with some outside numbers. Question, though, at this point, I think you specified by next meeting. Is that doable? I just want to make sure we're not asking you to do something that can't be done.
We can have a lot of it done for the first meeting. We would, it would take us some time for the second meeting to, the second meeting in June would get us a little bit more tightly aligned, because it is the end of the school year, and lots of projects are starting, and lots of companies are busy, but we'll have, we'll have what you're looking for by that second meeting in June for feedback.
So what we're asking for under a motion like this is, is doable under, in your experience? Kristen, you want to? Yes, you're shaking your head. Okay. Questions or discussion or further? Mark?
Dr. Crossbow, when, when a district typically ventures into this territory of starting a bond, is this a typical maneuver?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely part of the process.
Anything further? Should we take a vote? Okay.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward?
Yes.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion to pursue outside estimates, estimating, yeah. I'm trying to write this while I'm talking here. Outside estimates, estimates and a closer number. That passes 7-0, I believe? Was that, that was a 7-0? Okay. Okay, so that takes care of bond. Should we move on to mill levy override potential? Are we comfortable with that? So there's a lovely chart here regarding the mill levy override, and I just have a general question, and maybe this is a Gordon, it's probably a Gordon question, because this looks like a Gordon chart.
Thank you.
Explain, explain the zeros, essentially.
I'll take that as a compliment, that it looks like a Gordon chart. The zeros on this indicate that in the year zero, so should the board vote to place a mill levy override initiative on the ballot, and that MLO initiative is successful, that would pass in November of 2018. Taxes would be collected starting in January, essentially. The district starts receiving those in March and April are the biggest bulk of those revenues. So none of this is budgeted in the budget right now, in the 18-19 budget that the board is, has under consideration. So the first year, you get revenue that is not budgeted, but there are some uses of that that would be, that could be taken advantage of without having to do a supplemental budget. So those, those two items that you see in year zero with dollar amounts on them, the $4.9 million is the proposed, or it is the proposed deficit use of reserves in the budget this year. And then with the legislation that was passed in 2017, charter schools, based on the plan that's put in place, the charter schools would share in some level of the mill levy override. We would still need a more formal legal opinion on that, but it's, from a conservative standpoint, it's dollars that are invested or dollars that are allocated in year zero, leaving the $7.9 million at the, at the bottom for, we would receive the cash, the district would receive the cash or revenue, and those dollars would be put into restricted reserves. So they would be in our reserves at the end of the year, our cash level would go up, but they would have definite restrictions on what those dollars could be used for. So one example could be that, that $7.9 million could be used over the next three or four or five years for a curriculum fresh every year, every year and a half, for the, to catch up the backlog of, of curriculum refreshes that have not been done.
Saving it that zero year, and then you're allocating it and spending it in one, two, and three. Okay.
And it absolutely has to be spent.
In those items that we've called out.
Absolutely what the, what the voters have approved in the ballot language. That's why the ballot language is so, so important.
All right. Questions other than that one? Are we ready to make a motion?
That's exciting.
I think, Mark, do you have a motion, maybe?
Yeah, I wrote it in advance, so it's going to sound pretty formal.
That's excellent.
I move that to compensate for the financial challenges created in our district due to the ongoing underfunding by the state through the use of its budget stabilization factor, and because our budgeted reserves will no longer be able to sustain current operations, and since we cannot identify a way to reduce our expenses without severely and adversely affecting the education of our students, we place a mill levy override on the November 2018 ballot, not to exceed $16 million, and direct staff to focus on priorities identified by the master planning committee, including but not limited to eliminating our annual operating deficit, competitive employee compensation, textbooks, physical and/or digital curriculum and learning materials, information technology updates, safety and security, and other state statute mandated obligations.
I think you just wrote the bond.
I am going to do it. Mark, you get an A-plus for tonight on that one. Mark is going to make all the motions from here on out. That is excellent. And you can even, like, give that to Wendy, and it can get right in the minutes. Amazing, thank you. Yeah.
My second.
All right, good.
Don't ask me to repeat it, though.
So it's been, it's been moved and seconded to pursue a mill levy override initiative on the November 2018 ballot, as per the items called out in, in Mark's motion. Any further discussion? Yeah?
I feel like we've talked about this for a number of meetings. I feel like it's pretty clear why we're doing this, but I did want to mention a couple of things. Regardless of what happens at the state level, all of the districts surrounding us, Pooter Valley, St. Vrain, Windsor, Greeley, they've already seen the writing on the wall, they've already made a compensation like this. I think it's time that our district does the same thing. Yeah.
Gordon, we asked Gordon to prepare something for us, and I think you have it, right, Gordon?
Oh, you have another handout?
It has like an analysis that we asked him for.
There's another handout that, that compares Thompson to other regional districts. I'd be glad to, to have that on an agenda for a future presentation to the public, but if the board would like that handout, I'm glad to distribute it right now.
Yeah. That'd be great.
While he's handing that, I just want to, I think Stan made this point before, and I wanted to just make, that if this were to pass, it's really not a huge leap above and beyond what we already have. Like, we're going to be able to really close the gap for even more. I mean, this simply gets us whole now. So if this does pass, I don't want the community or every expectation that we got this big pot of money now, and we're going to be able to close the benefits and all. I mean, this is really just to get us, for the most part, whole again, as well as get some curriculum and IT and a few of those other additional things, but it's not this big windfall of money that's going to come in and...
Right. Yeah, we're still playing catch-up. Well, it's, it's interesting, it's interesting, too, Paul, that essentially what we lose every year, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gordon or Dr. Shear, essentially what we're, what we've been losing every year due to the BS factor is approximately right around that $14 million. And so this is essentially a one-year, it's like a one, one-year's worth of Vex, really.
Every year, it's $14 million, though. So until inflation takes it out.
Right, but we've had 10 years of BS.
So about $140 million, is that right, Gordon, around, that we're owed by the state?
That's correct. It's averaged probably $14 or $15 million. It's gone, went from a high in, and I'm talking about the negative factor, formerly known as the negative factor, now known as the budget stabilization or BS factor. Start, was at one point $18 or $18.5 million the impact on Thompson, which was underfunding from what's called for in the Constitution from the School Finance Act funding formula. So a high of $18 million. The board will recall that there's been a $150 million buydown statewide of the, the budget stabilization factor this year. So I believe the estimate for Thompson's share in the 18-19 proposed budget is about $12 million.
There you go.
But from a cumulative impact, it's certainly $140, $150 million.
And following up on what Pam said, and what you said, Madam President, I think it's very important the public understand this. When the negative factor came about, the district did two things, three things. One, they reduced centralized staff. Two, they deferred maintenance. And three, they postponed certain curriculum challenges, and they even had to draw down on the reserves.
Reserves, that would be number four.
That would be number four. So what's fundamental to understand is, we still need the bond to catch up on 10 years of maintenance we didn't perform, and this will just make us home with curriculum and salaries and ongoing maintenance that comes later on. So I think that needs to be understood by the public, so I'm making that.
And number five would be, I mean, one year, we didn't even do steps and columns for our teachers. I mean, they got no COLA, they got no steps and columns. So, I mean, there were, not only was central admin slashed, I mean, there were salaries cut, and, you know, everybody took a hit.
Everybody took a pain, though, and I do want to say this other thing. I asked Dr. Shear, I says, "Listen, I'm being, I'm being elected to be a guardian of public money, and I know something about facilities, and when you delay maintenance, the cost only goes up. So how could we say we did the fiscally responsible thing?" And Dr. Shear's response is, "I could fix a roof two, three years later. I can't give a second-grade education to a student two, three years later." So congratulate you, Dr. Shear, for educating me on that one. So congratulate you, Dr. Shear, for educating me on that one, and we just, hey, we, we just have to, we have to get going here. That's the whole point.
It's not prudent to wait.
So thank Gordon for this, oh, there you are. Thank you for this. Can this go up on the website somehow, or this can be attached to what we do tonight, or does it have to be, is there some way that the public can access this?
I would assume we can attach it to Board Docs with the agenda tonight, and again, if the board would like a presentation on this at the next meeting, I'm glad to present it in public as well.
Yeah, we'll let you know that. So for tonight, we just have it.
Yeah, and I have one little comment I'm gonna, no, no, afterwards, I'll show you just a little suggested change.
So we have a motion, motion in a second on the floor to go ahead with the mil levy override, not to exceed 16 million per Mark's motion. Any further discussion? Okay. Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
All banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visser Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swanty?
Aye.
Thank you, board. It's another unanimous vote to go forward with the mil levy override. All right, that takes us to the end of action items tonight. We will move on to discussion items. Item 7.1 is a Thompson Education Foundation presentation, and I believe Kim Akeley Sharon, the executive director of Thompson Education Foundation, here and after referred to as TEF, is here to present that.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that shortening. Good evening. I'm Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the board. My name is Kim Akeley Sharon. I'm the executive director of Thompson Education Foundation, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and share a little bit, I think I'll refresh history a little bit about what the foundation and the district relationship looks like, and then also tell you a little bit about where we're moving forward in the future. On your first slide that you see, you see our mission is, first and foremost, of course, is exceptional educational opportunities. Do I need to do something? I do.
I think Wendy, Wendy will do it while you're talking.
Thankfully Wendy's here.
Yeah. Here, you can look on with my...
Perfect, thank you. Excellent. Note that tech person is not in my job title. So our mission is, has always, and has always been exceptional educational experiences for students and educators in our district. And our vision, and really, I think, in some ways are, actually our charge, is to be the community's best answer to supporting student and educator opportunities within the district outside of what can be done at a governmental level. I'll point out that our board is made up of business and community and educational leaders. We have 15 members. Two of those are ex officio or non-voting members. That would be Dr. Shear as the superintendent, and Pam Howard as our board liaison. So what I really want to be able to impart tonight is that the Thompson Education Foundation is actually bigger than Thompson in the sense that education foundations and school foundations exist around the state and around the country. National School Foundation Association is an overarching national organization. There are 600 members from all over the country that are part of that organization. And then also the Colorado School Foundations Association. There are 16 members currently of, we estimate about 30 or 32 school foundations that are in Colorado. And collectively, CSFA members represent more than 50% of all the students, public school students in Colorado. I'm fortunate to be involved with both of those organizations at the national level. I help with their annual conference, which brings everybody from the country all together to have some great conversations about moving our sector forward. For example, after this last conference that we had last, two months ago now in Nashville, this organization, which is only about 13 years old, is actually going to be moving forward with best practices and standards for our sector within the nonprofit umbrella. Very excited about that opportunity. With the Colorado Schools Foundation Association, I've been fortunate to be the chair of that organization for the last three years, and we've really seen momentum moving forward, having conversations amongst those of us here in the state about what we can do about public education and for public education. Just really quickly, why foundations exist at all, they basically rise out of the needs of their, their associated school district. And so they're all very different, which is why I think that the work that the national organization is going to be doing around best practices and standards will help all of us be able to move our sector forward. Just to point out that 59 billion was donated to education in 2016. This is second only behind religious organizations. Now, of course, that is split between higher education and K-12 education, but there are many donors who are now shifting their focus from higher ed and shifting it more toward college, excuse me, toward public education, elementary and secondary schools. I just wanna talk a little bit about our signature programs. These are some, some of these you've heard about before, but bear with me as I kind of walk everyone through this a little bit. Help Kids Succeed School Supply Program. This benefits our students that have a higher economic need and can't necessarily afford the school supplies that they need to be successful in the classroom from that very first day. The way that I like to talk about this, or what I like to share with folks, is one of the things I'm very proud of is that we don't necessarily screen students for this, we don't ask for free and reduced lunch paperwork, we don't make assumptions around that. We assume that if someone has to ask for a backpack, that they need a backpack. And it may be because maybe dad just lost his job, it may be because that family has four kids, and they can make it month to month, but the month of August when they have to buy all those school supplies puts them below the opportunity to be able to put food on the table. So if we can help with that, we do. You see the numbers there for 2017, we did 1,600 backpacks, which represents 10% of our student population, and the breakdowns are there as well. We almost, almost half those backpacks go to the elementary level, and then the other half are split between the secondary and the high school level. We anticipate at this point, we have the numbers or the requests out to schools asking them, we have, we anticipate the amount will be similar in 2018, and the cost of that program to fulfill that every year is $25,000 to $30,000. I'll also say that one of the things that has been a true benefit to us is this Thompson School District coming together and having a comprehensive list, supply list for both elementary and middle school. That has helped us be able to fulfill more needs for more students and not have to guess what the school needs or what the school needs, that just, that we did not have the capacity to do that. I'll also point out, in the photo down below, there are volunteers that work on that effort. When we do this, now we'll know when we're gonna be doing it in 2018, now that we have a calendar. That's exciting, thank you. But when we do this at Conrad Ball Middle School, we bring in community members from all over the region, and last year we had 232 volunteers who came together to support our students. The other thing that we are very proud about is our Great Idea Encore and Founder's Grants, and this puts money directly back into schools and back into district programs and opportunities. Just pointing out that since the program started for our classroom grants, which are now called Great Idea Grants, we've put in 154,000 since 1999 for our Founder's Grants, which are more of a district-wide student-centered opportunity. We just started that in 2011, $38,000. And I'm very excited about some opportunities that the foundation board has looked at to increase not only the amount that we can give, but hopefully the amount that is requested from us. Something else we do, and I know that many of you, if not all of you, have been to this event at least once, is our Educator Appreciation Breakfast. You'll notice in our mission, we did talk about the fact that we support the educators within the district. That is very important because they're part of this, they're part of the success of our students, and they do amazing work, and we are honored to be able to celebrate them every single year at this event. Next year, you'll see the date there, April 3rd. Get that on your calendars, if you even have your 2019 calendars. And, yeah, so we're excited about that. Something new to us, and again, impacts teachers, but ultimately impacts students, is our Windows on the World Grant, which is a $3,500 award to go to a teacher to travel someplace in the world, gain new knowledge, and bring it back to our district. We're in year two of that program. It has been supported by the Hyatt Family Fund of the Community Foundation of Northern Colorado, as well as other generous donors within the community. This year, we have two teachers traveling. One, Justin Mirror from Turner Middle School is traveling to Italy, and Amy Pash, Turner Middle School, is traveling to the Atlantic Provinces. In both cases, they are learning items that will inform the curriculum of their grade level that they work with at the middle school level, and they'll be sharing that out with other teachers within our district. I will point out that both of, this year, both teachers came from Turner Middle School. We actually are school blind when we make those awards, and that was a super exciting celebration day, though, to be able to share that with that school community. So those are some of our featured programs, some of our integral programs, but here are some other things that we do that I think that we don't always do a great job of sharing out, just the impact that we have on our students. So we hold over 60 restricted fund accounts to support programs and activities within the district. And when I call them restricted fund accounts, that means that the money that comes in from those donors are held for those specific programs, and it's not used for any other purpose, any of the other initiatives that I talked about here. For example, our scholarships, last year we awarded over $224,000 for our programs, as well as our partner programs for scholarships for students, 62 scholarships for graduating students, 24 for students that were receiving multi-year scholarships. Several of our funds directly support music and art programs within Thompson School District, elementary instrumental music, musical instrument repair, encounters with music, the Lou Haskew Fund for Arts Education, Art Steps, LISA, and the Bill Reed Historic Theater Fund. I wanna point out the Bill Reed Historic Theater Fund because one of the functions that we can have as the nonprofit that is supporting the district or is associated with the district, is we can help with capital projects or short-term projects, things that need rejuvenation or refresh or creation, for example, like an outdoor classroom, or the work that the Bill Reed community is trying to do around refreshing their theater and their theater program. So that may not be a longstanding fund for us, it could have a, basically a cap at the end when it's all done, when the project is finished. A couple of other things we do, I know that Madam President had talked about the second grade field trips that just took place this last month, so we provide the transportation for all the second and fourth grade students to go on curriculum-based field trips within our community to the Love of Music, well, to the History Days Celebration, and also for fourth grade to Bobcat Ridge and to the River Plume, Flume, excuse me, that is at Big Thompson Elementary. And then another one, and we get, we have a lot of people that are paying attention to this fund, and I'm really thrilled for that, is our Homeless Assistance Fund. As you all know, we have a homeless liaison within the district, Jonna Ramchander, and the work that she does through the federal programming for our homeless students is incredible, but the funding is really low, and the needs are really high. And so as the associated nonprofit, we've been able to help change some things there, help families and some of our unaccompanied youth be able to maintain their day-to-day participation in school. And that's the important thing, that's the purpose of this fund, is to make sure that we can ensure that those students are at school, are able to learn, have what they need to do to be able to do that. On the horizon, so I'm coming up, actually, on my sixth year of being in this, in this role, which it's gone by in a finger snap, and we've done a lot of the great, a lot of the foundational work that we need to do as an organization. We are on the cusp of new marketing efforts to be able to share stories with the community, stories of what our impact is, but also just in general, the positive and amazing things that happen here in Thompson School District on a regular basis. We certainly are focusing on increasing community support to assist with unmet needs and additional unmet needs within the district, and growing capacity at the foundation itself, both with funding and staffing for what we want to do around these pieces. There is a district-wide fundraiser that we're sponsoring for the elementary level in November of 2018. I've met with almost all, not quite all, of the elementary principals to talk about that opportunity and give them the option, the opportunity to opt in. And then something else that we're doing that's immediate is refreshing our website. There's a little sneak peek of it, you're the first ones to see it. That's very, very, very preliminary, although it should be up and running by the middle of June. So we're excited for that, too, and that just goes to help us being able to share our stories. One other thing I wanted to point out to you is that we are gonna be doing a district-wide community fundraiser on Thursday, November 1st, at Embassy Suites. It starts at 4:30 PM with the idea that anybody coming from school or from an office can come, celebrate with us, learn more about the foundation, about what we do with the district, about what the successes of the district, and, and hopefully provide some support and still be home to put the kids to bed by 8 o'clock. So that was our plan. We'll see if it works. That's our goal. So thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Any questions?
Amazing work.
Thank you.
And that was a great report, too. I mean, it was very comprehensive.
Questions, anybody?
Great, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you to the foundation for all you do for the kids. Next up, item 7.2, bus advertising update, and we have Dr. Sebers and Mr. Wilson.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shear, Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer.
And all the Mr.'s up there, okay, sorry.
Right. So, so the bus advertisement program has concluded its first year of pilot, and will receive an update on the program's first year by Myron Wilson, who is our Director of Transportation, and James Edwards is right behind me, and he's the manager of Materials and Procurement.
Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Shear. So a quick update on the bus advertising and how that program has been going. We'll start off with a quick recap of the program in itself. So about a year ago, on June 7th, the board approved the bus advertising program for this current year that we are in. The program was designed to be utilized to improve district community support and generate, and/or generate revenue for transportation, in that approval, the advertising would be limited to 30 school buses, the district would receive 50% of the advertising revenues, and of those revenues, the first 20K of revenue would be available to transportation, the remaining revenue would be deposited into the district's general fund, using Materials and Procurement through a bid process for Street Signs was selected to provide those advertising services, pretty much from A through Z to solicit, to build, to install, and maintain, and do the entire, to maintain the entire program, and we would just receive the benefit of the funds. We've had a lot of successes with the program. The review and approval process has been fantastic. Actually, we've had 100% consensus of reviewing and approving the advertisers for the bus advertisement via email that we received from First Street Signs, that is a mockup of, of the advertiser, and also how it would look on the side of the bus. Out of those 30 buses in this first year, they were able to have 25 advertisements, or buses, on 25 buses for this current school, school year, and some of the successes are reflected, and we actually had people walking into our building asking how could they get advertisement on the buses. So that was a, a great sign of that. The revenue for this year thus far, as we move to close this year, has been about almost $20,000, and of that, 50% of that has been almost 10 grand here for the district. We've had positive feedback from the community, no negative feedback, actually, what, how was it, we actually, zero negative feedback, and we've used that revenue to support students. We made a donation to KidPac, and also have been able to recognize multiple accomplishments in the Transportation Department with the employees. As we move forward, going into next year, only thing we're looking for recommendations for the program is to review, to renew the program just for one year, continuously improve the process as we find loopholes or just things where there needs to be improvement. And then when we get to this time next year, again, is to reevaluate for any enhancements, expansion, or elimination before the contract expires next year at this time. And that's pretty much the presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
No, but I'd, I'd like to meet Mr. Edwards, is it? I don't think we've met, so just come up, just say hi. I won't put you on the spot.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear, James Edwards, I'm the manager of Materials and Procurement here in the district.
Welcome.
I've been with the district three months, one week, three days, and 13 hours. Not that I'm counting, so.
I worked with Mr. Edwards on the, on the...
Audit RFP?
The audit, sorry about that, the Audit RFP, just wonderful experience, very, very meticulous, very straightforward, and very careful to protect all of our interests. So thank you. Thank you. I, I do have a question. Is it on the buses, are all the buses that we, the board has allocated, the percentage of buses that we allocated to have advertisement, are they all being used? Are they all, are they all being, is advertising on all those buses?
25 out of 30.
So if we were to say every bus could have it, it might not be every bus gets it?
Correct.
But yet you said people are coming in to, to wanna know how to do that. So you expect to expand next year then a little bit?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and that's the expectation. We're actually meet, we've met with First Street Signs, and we've laid out our expectations, and that's what we're expecting in upcoming years.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I was gonna have a question, oh, do you know, and you may not know this yet, but do the current people on the contract, do they want to continue for another year, is that, I'm assuming that's where you're going first, right?
Yes, as a matter of fact, when I was first contacted from Tom from First Street Signs, and that's pretty much what he said, hey, I got guys ready to renew, could you speed along the process and let us know if we can be able to move forward, so.
All right, any other questions? I've seen them, they look great, they're exactly what I was hoping they would look like, so, it's terrific. Maybe can you tell us some specifics of, you said the Kids PAC donation, can you tell us maybe some other things that the money's been spent on?
One of the things the money was spent on, one thing were flashlights, we're up early in the morning before everybody else, and currently we did, and some, the committee decided to get on some nice flashlights for all the drivers and parents, because not only walking out, they have to pre-trip to buses, also, we start getting the first funds during the fall, so the decision was made to get everybody a zipper hoodie cover with Thompson School District on it to represent the district, and plus, that helps them when we're out, when we're out in the...
Field trips and stuff.
Yes, out in field trips, and one of my favorite things, which I like everybody, which was a big morale booster, was our wonderful popcorn machine that we have, so, that was also a thing, because that was a really, really good thing that we, they just donate to that.
Caramel corn included?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, yes.
You all have to get a donut machine after Dr. Sheer leaves, because he provides donuts.
Yes, I'm trying, I'm wondering what's gonna happen with those donors after you leave.
I think I heard him say he'll be back, about five AM, yeah, once a month, yeah.
He'll be there when it's sixteen below.
Anybody else, questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Nice job. All right, next up, seven-point-three, proposed boundary changes, this is a discussion item at this point, but I am guessing you are gonna bring this back next month for action. Am I guessing correctly?
Good evening again, it's me. Good, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sheer. We are here to discuss the boundary recommendations, we've covered quite a bit over the last couple of meetings, here we are with the middle school conversation, and just here to answer any questions that you may have based on the map and recommendations on the document. And Skip will be here as well.
Board, questions?
I'm just really excited that we can move forward with this, to me, this is an important piece of really that restructuring of the district, and we'll make, oh, sure, of course, yeah, there you go, anyway, so, thank you.
I know, it's good for us. I like the big map, too. We're looking at them, that's what we're doing. Yeah, that's right.
Right, right. It all looks very logical. Weird, huh? And again, to point out, you know, boundary changes that will affect transportation, and, you know, where there's a guaranteed seat for a student, but not necessarily where kids are really gonna end up.
Correct.
Because they can choice, but it helps.
The safety piece, I think, is really critical.
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot of people think that we can just redraw the boundaries, and that will move, shift kids to where they need to be, and to a degree it does, if we're gonna provide a bus, and the families are like, sure, you know, put the kid on the bus, that's fine.
For forty minutes.
Right, but, but then, you know, they don't, they go where they want to go for a program, or whatever other reason, so. Any questions on these board, because they will come back for next time around? Oh, we good?
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. All right, item seven-point-four, Gordon Jones, 2018-2019 budget update. We gave you twenty minutes today, Gordon.
Hopefully it won't be that long, as I've been warned in the past.
Do I have double copies of everything?
I noticed that, well, there, as well, there's, seems like there's, one time I look at it, and there's only single copies, they are just duplicates.
Just do, yeah, because it wasn't like that earlier today, so weird.
They, they're cloning themselves in there.
Okay, technology.
Thank you again, Madam President and the board, Dr. Sheer, for the ability to present the proposed budget for the 2018-19 school year. This satisfies one of the statutory requirements from the Colorado Revised Statutes, as you'll see in the board memo, for presenting a draft version of the budget, and this is a bit different than the previous presentations I've done, because this will include all funds, at least a high-level overview. There's a, an additional document attached here, labeled as the all-in-one document, that is essentially the, the frame of the entire budget. It has a wealth of information in there about a rolled-up budget, it also breaks down the number of positions by group, by program code, which is again, the CDE chart of accounts, how they want us to record positions. It's a comparison of the seventeen-eighteen budget with the eighteen-nineteen budget. There's also information for the headcount or the FTE, it shows it by licensed staff, classified staff, APT staff, there's also five or six pages in there with a lot of line-item detail about the non-FTE expenditures that are in the budget, and then a summary that we'll see here in just a second, of all the funds that the district maintains, and then the back part of those, of the deck, the all-in-one deck, is the individual budgets for each one of the funds. So a wealth of information that becomes essentially the basic content, or most of the content in the budget document that will be brought to the board with commentary that will be added to, for the board's approval, hopefully by the end of June. But at this point, given the board's actions tonight with the approval of the MOU, the three-and-a-half percent COLA, as well as steps and columns are reflected in the current general fund budget, so everything that we've talked to up to this point is in the general fund budget, so I'm just going to touch on a couple additional items here tonight in this presentation. This slide just shows the summary of the, all the funds that the district maintains. A lot of people might not be aware that there are these funds out there, you can see in the far-right column whether it's restricted or not, the general fund, while it says no, is still obviously restricted by the constraints that we have from a revenue and expenditure and a reserve standpoint, but all the other funds that you see listed there are very restrictive in the, the use of what goes in and out of those funds, so it's just a quick summary of all the funds that are in the, in the district that the district maintains. Again, there will be a separate budget for each one of these at the back of the all-in-one attachment on board docs. This is that summary slide of all the, the funds showing the expected beginning balance, and again, keep in mind that we're looking at the eighteen-nineteen budget year here, so that is a preliminary beginning balance, because we won't know what for sure that exact beginning balance will be until we have our audited results. The way we true that up from an accounting standpoint is we come back to the board in, I'm trying to think what month that is, December, I believe, and ask for a supplemental budget, December, in December, a supplemental budget, or a budget revision to update the beginning fund balances, but these are our estimates pending the, the review that we will go through this year, the audit review that we'll go through. You'll see revenue in, transfers in and out, and expenditures, with the pluses and minuses in red at the top, to get to an ending balance, and then the far-right column, the net change that's expected in each of those funds. I will mention the net change number could be concerning, as you look at that and see a lot of negatives in there. One of the things that we do, again, by statute, you have to, the board has to appropriate the expected expenditures for the year, a very common practice is to appropriate the majority of the dollars in the fund. So a good example of that is in the Land Reserve Fund, Fund Twenty-seven, you will see a two-point-three-million-dollar use of reserves or net change in the fund balance. That is, that's available, but not planned at this point. You see in the next column, too, that the ending balance of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the approach in the past has been to keep a balance in that fund, and then appropriate, which means it's available for, but not mandated or necessary to spend that without the board's approval. It's just the appropriation of the funds that has to take place. So even though a lot of those funds show the, the use of reserves, that's a very common accounting practice. These slides, I'm gonna go very quickly through, in fact, not spend any time at all, this is the general fund budget that we've talked about. Earlier, I mentioned when we were talking about the mill levy override, the four-million-nine-oh-six use of reserve balance that would be satisfied with the first year, year zero of any successful MLO, so you can see that that's the, the number there. Even with the increases that we've seen, we expect to have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar improvement in the budget from the seventeen-eighteen year to the eighteen-nineteen budget year, and that's primarily a factor of, or a function of having additional revenue from the state from a per-pupil revenue standpoint, based on the buy-down of the negative factor. This chart will also be in the final budget document that's posted on the website and submitted to the state, it shows the sources of revenue in the general fund. So you can see the largest portion by far is from the School Finance Act, those are taxes that are collected locally from a property tax perspective, and from the state equalization portion that is provided by the state, which comes from the State General Fund, which is primarily funded by income tax, state income tax, and state sales tax. You can see the various other items that are on there, the current mill levy overrides is the next largest portion of nine-point-nine percent of the budget, that's the fourteen-million-forty-thousand that are in current, currently approved mill levy overrides. Similar slide, only showing expenditures, where the expenditures go, it's a very conscious decision that's made by staff, by administration, by cabinet, that we, we want to direct as many dollars as possible to the classroom, and I think this slide shows that. Again, it's arranged by program codes, these are the CDE-required codes to be used, eighty-three-point-nine percent of the budget of expenditures is in instruction and instruction support. Items in school support, the next largest piece would be items like transportation and janitorial, those are two of the typical items in that. We have central support, which are some of the administrator positions in the, the district, the support also instruction, business services, you can see, and then general admin at less than one percent of the expenditure budget. That's a very, I was going to say a very good number, but it's a, it's a, it's a lesser number than most of our neighboring districts, I won't go so far as to say that's a good number, because there are obviously ramifications that come with them. This slide we've seen in the past, which is the trend from the fund, of the fund balance, the general fund balance, the dotted line on the, toward the right-hand side is the separation between actual dollar, actual audited figures, and the two years that are still not yet audited, so the seventeen-eighteen year that we're in right now, and then the eighteen-nineteen budget year. So certainly, the, the fund balance has come down over the last five or six years through prudent decisions by the board, but we're at a, getting to a crossroads that needs to be rectified, because at some point, those fund balance, the fund balance will not be available to satisfy the ongoing needs of the district. As asked for previously, previously by the board, there's a three-year plan that's included here, this is the, starting with the eighteen-nineteen upcoming budget year, and then the next two years after. This page lays out the assumptions that were used in arriving at those, a very conservative point-two-five percent funded pupil count increase, then you can see the rate of inflation that's proposed at two-point-nine percent in nineteen-twenty, and two-point-eight percent in twenty-twenty-one. Those figures are not made up by staff, those are actually from the governor's March economic forecast, is the latest forecast that's available, those numbers are in there. The other revenue item that we have, a slight increase at point-seven-five percent, and then full-time equivalent costs, or FTE costs, you can see the assumptions there. Essentially, I've planned for steps and columns at two-point-seven-five percent in these numbers that we'll look at in just a minute. Medicare contribution remaining flat at one-point-four-five percent, that's mandated by the federal government. Health, dental, and life insurance, up by five percent each year in nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. The board will recall that we had a benefit this year with a reduction of two-and-a-half percent in our health, dental, and life costs, that, that shouldn't be something, as much as I'd like to plan on that decrease year-over-year, it certainly wouldn't be prudent, so there's a five percent increase each, each year that's built in. Disability insurance remains flat at ten dollars per employee per month over the three-year period. For the non-FTE costs, there was the rate of inflation increase on the general cost that was shown above, the pass-through expenditure for the charters is strictly based on the, their funded pupil count and per-pupil revenue changes that were discussed above as well. Incremental funding to the charters is planned to be replaced by distribution of the mill levy override revenues, as called for in House Bill Seventeen-Thirteen-seventy-five. This is the item that I'd mentioned earlier, which is the state mandated sharing at some level of the mill levy overrides with all schools in the district, including charters. So the expectation at this point, or the forecast, or the estimate, is that the incremental funding, when that was established three years ago, I believe, is when that came into existence at the board's direction. The methodology that was used is similar to the methodology that will be used, anticipated to be used for compliance with House Bill Thirteen-seventy-five that was passed last year. Certainly, we will involve the legal counsel as, as we firm up that number, but there's still a lot, because the, because this is new legislation that didn't go into effect in eighteen-nineteen, it actually goes into effect in the nineteen, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, but each district either has to adopt a plan by July first of this year, or share on an incremental basis, on a, on a straight pro-rata basis. So that information will be coming to the board over the next two meetings as well, of what the proposed plan for that, for compliance with House Bill Thirteen-seventy-five will be.
Can I ask you a quick question on that while we're there? So at this point, you're just using the pass-through, or not pass-through, the incremental number that we've been using, do you think it's gonna be in the ballpark?
I think that is certainly in the ballpark, yes, from the methodology that was established originally, because the legislation that was passed in Thirteen-seventy-five says that, and I'm not going to quote it, because I unfortunately don't have it memorized, or fortunately, I don't have it memorized, depending on how you look at it, that it, it has to be consistent with the ballot language that was adopted, if there's specific items that are called out, those have to be satisfied, and then any remaining amount would, would be available for pro-rata distribution. So for instance, one of the MLOs that the district has in place has a restore fifty-four positions at, in the district that were scheduled for reduction or had been removed, so when that mill levy passed, those fifty-four positions, we track those separately within the financial records, we have a separate sub-fund for each MLO that we have in place, and we have to maintain those positions. So those, those dollars, as an example, would come off the total of the, whatever the mill levy override total amount was, and then the remaining amount being distributed, so that's just one example, there's several items like that that come off of each of the MLOs with, using that methodology, and at this point, that's believed to be correct and, and defensible, certainly. Capital projects are expected to remain at the same amount, so no increase there, and transfer to other funds increase at the rate of inflation. One of the typical transfers that we see are capital projects, is certainly one of those transfers, but another one is that the general fund supports is the utility cost of the aquatic center. of the aquatic centers that the district maintains, the three swimming pools across the district. The fund, the pools are self-funding or self-maintaining, meaning the revenue that they generate from swimming lessons and rental of the facility and those types of things, less the expenses that they incur for staffing primarily, but then swimming pool supplies and those types of things are, come out. The district or the general fund provides the utility cost for those pools and that's expected to increase slightly at the rate of inflation. So in rolling all those numbers together, you will see these projections for the budget year 1819 and then the estimates for 1920 and 2021. So again, the next budget year, the 4 million 906 use of reserves is a number that we're familiar with, that we've seen before. With, using the assumptions that we discussed on the previous page, those, that use of reserves goes up to 5.6 million the next year and 6.1 million the year thereafter. Keep in mind the highlighted point at the bottom. This assumes no new sources of revenue other than limited 0.25 student growth, student count growth and the PPR growth or per pupil revenue growth from the state, which is essentially at the rate of inflation. So it does not contemplate any new mill levy override. It does not contemplate any additional funding from the state. It does not contemplate any potential change in the funding mechanism for education should Initiative 93 get placed on the ballot in November and be successful. None of that revenue is anticipated. So as I said, the district nears a, nears or stands squarely in a crossroads. There's not sufficient general fund reserve balance to cover the next two years after the 4 million 900,000 projected use of reserves in the 1819 budget.
If I may. I thought the board asked you to show what you would cut, what the district proposes to cut to balance the budget. Do you have that somewhere in the presentation?
As we move on to the next slide.
Okay, very good.
The next two slides, actually. These in no particular order and certainly not recommended.
Yeah.
But potential.
Just options.
Options is a good way to put this. Are some of the things that have been considered or could be considered as we would head into the 2019, 2020 budget season. So we've talked about school closures earlier. You'll see those same numbers repeated here. Same, same theory or same methodology that these are the actual costs and then an 80% factor applied to those as a, just to be more conservative, to try to allow for, as Mr. Seder said earlier, those unplanned expenditures that could crop up, whether it be from a school closure or any of these items that are listed here. So you can go down the list there and see what those would look like from the potential school closures. Change in class size ratios. When we set the budget each year, we work closely, business services works closely with HR in setting the staffing plans and those are based on ratios that are in place. And you can see what the increase of each of those is if we increase that by a half a student or a one student or 1.5 or two. So just showing various levels of potential savings that could be realized if class size ratios were changed. Reduction of positions, you can see again the same thing. Again, for analysis purposes only, the reduction of 20 positions, 30 positions and 40 positions.
Again, comment to the board. I would think in our developing the argument for the MLO, this would go on the website. And we would make the assumption, you know, we're closing the schools and then the balance has to be made up, maybe give out, we would have 2.2 plus million dollars reduction from closing the schools, leaving say a $3 million shortfall, show $5 million of potential savings and say, we're not making the decision now, but we'll have to pick our poison later on.
Well, this is already out there, right? Because it's attached to board docs. I mean, it's not, it's not specifically on the website like you're calling out, but it is already.
What I would say is that we should develop this argument very explicitly in support of our MLO.
I don't disagree.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So moving on to the second page of potential cost reduction measures. Salary reduction after steps and columns. So you will recall in the three-year plan that was discussed here on this slide and the assumptions made before, the, under full-time equivalent costs, that the salaries would be increased at steps and columns. That has already been built in, the 2.75% has already been built in to the year ending numbers that you'll see on row 22 here. So if we go to those potential cost-saving measures, again, salary reduction after steps and columns, that would mean that you would grant steps and columns and then have a overall, every, all staff would take a 1% pay reduction, a 2% pay reduction, a 3% pay reduction. My intent in preparing these different scenarios is just that, to show different options and what the magnitude of each one of those potential savings might be. Starting on row 25 is a freeze of the salary schedule, meaning the 2.75% steps and columns that is already built into those projected numbers would be removed. So you can see what that, that would be. And starting on row 27, the sharing of employee-only HDL is health, dental, life. In the private sector, certainly it's very common for an employer and employee to share in the medical costs. At 8020, 7525, 6040, there's a variety of different methods out there. Currently, the district picks up 100% of the employee-only coverage. This shows what the impact would be if there was a 9010 sharing of the HDL costs and an 8020 sharing of the HDL costs. Then the last item on the page, reduction or elimination of programs. Again, these are examples only and this should not be considered an exhaustive list. It was put forth as just examples. So you can see some of those, those items that could be considered, whether it's a 50% reduction of our concurrent enrollment programs. Elementary and middle school extra duty contracts, whether that be for activities or athletics, essentially removing middle school athletics. Again, certainly not an exhaustive list and that would be refined should we be moving further into the 1920 budget year. There would be other considerations that would have to be brought forth, but the intent of this presentation is just to give a board, the board and the community a feel for what potential reductions may be necessary absent any, any material change in the revenue scenario of the district. Questions that I could address, please?
I have a quick one and then I'll go. The 288 estimated for the modulators, is that figured in here somehow?
It is and it isn't. We would, as we look at closing out the 1718 year, there's typically capital projects that have not been completed and they would be carried over to the next year. That would be one item. We would expect to have sufficient funds in that carryover to accommodate that. However, that means that those projects would not be, that they were originally slated for would have to be delayed at that point. So I would not expect it to change the bottom line number at this point from a budget standpoint, but it would just be a reallocation.
Gordon, this was absolutely excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is just what, at least what I want to see and it's worth waiting till 9:30 to see.
Yep, Pam?
I may have missed this, but are the public forums scheduled yet for June since?
Thank you for the reminder. There is a, as I was reminded earlier in the evening by Mr. Hausmann, there is a draft communication waiting for my approval to go out. Those are tentatively scheduled and I would say stronger than tentatively scheduled for May 30th and May 31st. One in Berthoud and one here in the boardroom, open to anybody in the public. It will be a presentation similar to this to talk about the parameters that go into building, the process of going into building the budget and the parameters that were used, assumptions made. Very similar to this presentation is what will be presented to the public in a much less intimidating environment perhaps, with myself presenting those and available to answer any questions the public may have in a very informal setting.
I've had hundreds of people asking me, waiting to, thousands, I think. They're just so excited for the budget, community forums.
Tickets will be available.
May I suggest you invite the members, at least make the members of the audit committee aware and if they want to attend.
Certainly.
That'd be a good idea.
Any questions down this?
Not really any questions, but I'm not sure what the next presentation's going to be and I'm only going to ask for this if other board members are interested. But I don't really want to go through the line by line items, but there are some line items that had fairly significant changes. I mean, so if there's interest, you know, if something changed more than 10 or 15, something that really philosophically somehow get maybe an explanation or summary on those big areas.
Are you looking at the all-in? Are you in the all-in-one now?
Yeah, I think I am.
The all-in-one in the non-FTE expenditures, I would imagine. I can certainly look through that and pick out items that I can specifically address in the next presentation.
I know that's extra work. I mean, if none of the other boards are interested in that, then I can live.
Well, I would say if it's a, you know, obviously we know anything with salaries and benefits is the raise we gave, so that's obvious. But if there's any, you know, I don't know what's considered a large amount in your world. Certainly, you know, not $10,000, but, and maybe you could just do it in a memo to us and an email to us, is that?
I can certainly go through that. That would not require much time or effort by staff to go through. Believe me, we have scrubbed these numbers very thoroughly and I would imagine, even though I won't offer at this point, but if there's any one item that you called out, I would hope that I could give an explanation for it right now. So it doesn't require a lot of research because we have, we, meaning myself and staff, have thoroughly scrubbed those numbers at this point.
All right, can I quiz you then?
Try.
I'll give you one.
Try one.
Just a couple of things, like I, might just be a change in how we're structuring, but like district-wide PD went down 110,000. Learning services budget went up 427. So those are pretty big shifts of just maybe how we're thinking about.
I don't know. The PD budget, I believe, is a, I'll have to look at the notes that we have in the document that we have available to us, but it's a, again, a reallocation. It came out of one line item and went into another line item.
Right.
Based on the board directive of increasing or improving recruit and retain efforts is primarily what that one's associated with.
Yeah, so big things like that, you know, I can't, there's probably a handful of them, I'm guessing.
Another big one that you will probably see is the out-of-district placement of special ed students is probably a half a million or 600,000 more. We've talked about that already as one of those anomalies that takes place, not an anomaly, but a significant increase that's taking place from this actual year, 1718, to the budget year of 1819. So that would be another example, but I can certainly go through the list and if the board thinks that a reasonable threshold is $100,000 change plus or minus, or if there's some other threshold that the.
I like, you know, more than a 10% change or something.
Did you say the learning services going up?
I saw the learning services budget, if I read it right, was up 427,000.
I could explain that. Dr. Crespo's leaving and that's what it costs to fill all the work she does. That's easy.
We can have that available at the next meeting.
Yeah, because we will be, no, we won't be adopting this until June 30.
We are on, again, this is very much on the timeline. We're actually a bit ahead of the timeline from a budget adoption standpoint. It'll be presented at the June 6th board meeting. That's the meeting where it'll be available for public debate. If there's public comment on the budget, the board can address those, not address those questions, but hear the public comment at that point. After tonight's meeting, these documents will be available at the district office. They're already on the website under board docs. We will put them under our financial transparency section for the proposed budget, so they're available both electronically and available in the district office if somebody should so choose to come in and review those. And then the public forums on the 30th and 31st of May will be an opportunity for people to have any individual questions they may have. I would be happy to try to address whatever those questions are. So then presented at the June 6th and adopted at the June 20th, which is ahead of the statutorily required June 30th deadline for adopting.
All right. Thank you, Gordon. Good job. Takes us to the end of action and discussion items. We have some written reports. 8.1 is the JROTC marksmanship expansion. 8.2 is the monthly financial report for April. 8.3 is calendar of events for June. And 8.4 is families partnering in education or Family PI formerly known as Early Childhood Policy Council report. Anybody have any questions on those reports while we have some staff here?
Oh, I didn't see anything for the calendar of events for June, because there's nothing going on.
Oh, there's nothing there? Are there any activities? When schools close? You're right, there's nothing there.
I am sure we're busy doing something.
I'm sure there'll be something, so Wendy will double check. Okay. I didn't even look at that one. Questions? No? Dave?
Well, just down the reports, the next, I just, are we going to have the meetings the third Thursday of the month? I don't know. I always thought we should have had it the last two months, so I'd like to know, we can have one in June?
We are scheduled for one in June. We moved the May 1 from, which would have been tomorrow, we moved it to after our first meeting in May, which would have been May 3rd, because we wanted to have further discussion around the bond, was it May 3rd?
No.
Around the mill and bond.
We did something with the, because we did the PC.
Well, we moved May 17th to May 3rd. And then we have May 22nd, city council.
City council, we're having a joint meeting with city council.
I'm going to be out of town that whole week.
I believe, I believe we are scheduled for the June, June whatever. What would that be, Wendy?
21. First, we've got it on the books.
Could I make a suggestion? Dr. Schaefer, we would, I would like if Dr. Schaefer were to attend, just so we could talk. I mean, you know, would you be available? We normally start the meeting at 4 o'clock. Do we need to postpone it?
On June 21st?
On June 21st, delay it, not postpone it, delay it so you could, you could attend? And it's all meeting, it's not that you're, but you'll hear us speak.
It's a study session, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, at 4 o'clock?
You could be there?
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks. So yeah, so that, and then there's the joint meeting with the city council on the 22nd, which will include dinner at 5:00. It's in the Rialto upstairs in the Devereaux room and then the meeting itself starts at 6:00. We should get some agendas.
They're, they're ready to go.
Working on them, okay.
We finalized, I met with Steve this morning for breakfast and it's really two items. It's real simple. It's going to be talking about security and our relationship with the city regarding that. And then they want to talk about what you've talked about tonight regarding bond and mill. So those are the two items and that'll be formalized and urgent and we'll have it available to you probably tomorrow. Wendy will have it.
Sounds like a plan. Any future agenda items, requests for information? I think not at this time of year. Oh, you have one? You're sure?
Need to get ready to discuss a survey result. We're just about to put out a, a survey to the whole community around how the, how the community feels about us.
Okay. And will that be May, no, June?
That'll be in June.
The first meeting of June.
And basically, the concept is, is built around approximately 300 actual responses through a phone survey. And to get to those 300 responses, they'll probably be making what, 15,000? 15,000 phone calls to the community.
To get 300 and some answers, because nobody answers their phone. So please answer your phone if, you know, it comes.
And when they say 15 minutes, say, that's great, I'd love to talk to you for 15 minutes.
I just want to give you a heads up, if that's out there, it'll start here shortly. We're working on the final draft and it'll give us a good feel for where the, where the community is on a number of issues. It's a very powerful survey. Had a chance to take a good look at it. And then those results will be available for the board to take a good look at first part of June. I think that should be a part of your conversation as you get more and more into specifically about bond and mill. It'll give you some good feedback.
Anything else? All right. All right, thank you, board. We did a lot of hard work tonight, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Wishing Dr. Shear good luck with his surgery.
Oh, yes. Yeah, you'll keep us apprised. Tomorrow.